Good evening. This is the November 29, 2017 meeting of the zoning board of appeals for the town of Newcastle. Mr. Secretary?
Campfire Club.
Good evening. I'm Jerry Barrett. I'm the site planner/landscape architect for the project and I'm here with you Wiley tonight, who is the president of the Campfire Club. So we are here tonight. I think the last time when we discussed this project with the ZBA was at the site walk, at the site where everyone had a chance to see the site. Since then, we had gone back and worked with the planning board to process the environmental permits, specifically the wetland permit application, tree removal permit application, stormwater permit application, and steep slope permit application. We've been through several months of review with the planning board and the planning board, I believe, at this point is satisfied with the status of the environmental permits. And so it was discussed that we come back to this board and explain, bring you up to date where we are, what's happened, with the hope that if this board is satisfied, that we can move forward to a public hearing maybe next month or whenever. From what we understand, once the ZBA is satisfied with the site plan and can basically sign off on that, then we can go back to the planning board and then they can hold their public hearing on the environmental permits, which would then allow the Campfire Club to proceed to the building department and start their project. So, I'm sorry, just before, is that right, Eric?
Well, I believe the notices were sent out for this meeting. And I'm not sure if the applicant sent out notices for this meeting already, so technically you can, you know, if there are people here, I would open the public hearing tonight. You can always adjourn it to the next meeting, but if neighbors are here, I would allow, the board should allow them to make comments.
Okay. Okay. So, if the board members will recall, the Campfire Club, it's about 270 acres, majority of it is in the town of Northcastle. The area that we're talking about tonight is up in this corner, up by Campfire Road. Campfire Road, and this photo is right in here, and the subject of the application is this structure right here, which is this structure. And this is the structure that's the existing council hall. It's a one-level building. And what's going to happen is, right now, it's just too small to accommodate, the members accommodate all the things, the storage needs and all the things that they need to do in that building. So what they're proposing to do is to build a new council hall building, if you want to go to the next one. Actually, why don't you just go right to three, Hugh. They're proposing to construct a new building generally in the same location.
Sheet three.
Yeah, let's go to three. Well, you know, go to the zoning conformers plan. That's probably an important plan for this board. So while Hugh is doing that, what you're seeing here, this is the new building and the old building is right underneath it. And all we did was, we're generally in the same area, and what we ended up doing was we rotated the building so it's in line with the existing main cabin, which is behind it. And what that gave us was, we think, a little bit better spatial organization on the site. So again, this is, this is the entire site. This is the portion that's in Newcastle. And this is the subject of the application right here, which of course is this building right here. So we went through all the coverage calculations and the zoning conformers chart, and because it's such a large site, we didn't have any problems meeting the zoning requirements. So we can go to three. So what we did was, when we worked with the planning board, we went through the project and we've, we've modified the site plan quite substantially since, I guess, the last time the zoning board has seen the project. And what's happening now is that the, the new council hall is going to be built in this area. There is going to be a covered walkway connection, so that's upside down. There's going to be a covered connection that will come back to the, to the main cabin. And that's so the members can walk back and forth and stay out of the weather.
Say, Jerry?
I think you've got to go one more time.
One more counterclockwise.
There you go. So what we've done is, we've come in and we've repositioned this new building. And what this new building is, this new building is, it's, it's a little bit builder, larger in footprint, but what happened was, and you can see in this cross-section, what happened was, the existing building was right here. You can see it right here. And what's happening now is we're actually cutting into the grade here and it's going to be a two level. So that's how they're getting the extra square footage, that we're going from a single-level building that was right here, and it's going to go to a two-level building right here. So what you'll be able to do is, you'll be able to enter the building from the, from the turnaround. The main entrance is right here, or you can go through the, what we call the loop, and the loop will access the main cabin. And it also allows for drop-off here, and you can get onto this walkway here, and you can enter into the second level.
Where is the parking in relation to the building now? The main, that main parking area?
The main parking area is right here. It's still right here. This is the main parking area right here. All we did with this main parking area was, we added some islands to the parking area. Steve Coleman was requesting that we break up some of the large expanse of asphalt and add some plantings of trees to reduce the thermal impacts of stormwater entering the wetland, which we did. And as a result of the stormwater management plan that's been developed for it, all the stormwater is picked up, and before the stormwater would ever get to the wetland, which is over here, it would have to go through a series of infiltrators and a detention pond. So we don't think that, we don't feel there's going to be, the stormwater will have cooled by the time it ever gets to the, to the wetland. So we have the parking area here. We have some tree removals that have to go on. We're, we're going to replace, whatever trees have to come out, they're going to be replaced, and then some. We have the driveway loop, which would allow deliveries, the covered walkway. And, you know, why don't we go to the blow-up plan, which is the next plan. Shows it a little clearer.
Any plans, Jerry?
Yeah. You've got to switch it.
One more?
One more. Counterclockwise. There you go. So this, this blows this area up. You can see it a little bit better. These are the, these are the wetland buffer lines. We have a wetland system here, and of course, there's a wetland system here, so we have a wetland buffer line in this area. We have a wetland buffer line in this area, and we have a wetland buffer line in this area. So as a result, we are working within the wetland buffer, and therefore, we did have to provide mitigation. This is our mitigation plan that we've developed. We'll be getting to that later, but we think we have satisfied the comments and the concerns of the ERB and the planning board with mitigating the unavoidable impacts. One of the concerns was, there's a 30-inch specimen oak here, and the concern was to try to preserve that. So what we've done there is, when you see these, these red dashed lines here, these are aeration pipes. And what happens is, when we, there's about four feet of gravel fill in this area. So there's a boulder wall here. There's a boulder wall here. There's a larger boulder wall here. These were designed by a structural engineer. And what happens is, the stormwater that will gather, it'll come through here, it'll run through this area, it'll drain out and get back and go through. But these areas here, it will allow the, what, the way this will work is, as they get started, they will, they will lay the pipes, the perforated pipes, like six-inch perforated pipes, and they lay these things perpendicular to the road, and then they cover them with gravel, about a foot of gravel. Then they put a fabric over it, then it gets filled up with the rest of the gravel. And what happens is, the air is able to get through these pipes and continue to aerate the tree, tree roots. We've done that successfully before on other projects, so it does work. It will also allow any water that gets in here to drain out and keep feeding this area, which the ERB was concerned with. So we think we solved that problem. We previously, there was, if the board recalls, there was a loop road, there was a service road in the back, which required a lot of rock cutting. That had been eliminated, and that's how we ended up with this loop road over here, because we got rid of that. And that seemed to save a lot of rock chipping and steep slope disturbance. Let's go to the next one. The EC plan, we'll go through that quickly, but we did develop an erosion control plan for the project that I believe the planning board is now satisfied with. And, you know, it's the standard redundant measures to make sure that there is no adverse impacts on the wetland. We are working in the buffer. So we've, we've worked through that. For some reason, it, yeah, for some reason, you're clicking counterclockwise and it's going clockwise.
Set up, I'm sorry. One will be good. Good?
Yeah. Okay. So this is an aerial photograph that shows the entire site. This is the subject building right in here. This is, this is where the, the building is, this area down here, this, this is the, is the service entrance for Campfire Road. This is their maintenance barn. The subject is right here. So that's this building here. So what we're going to be doing is, because there's much better sightlines in this area, that all the construction traffic is going to come in off of Campfire Road. This is the entrance that's closest to the, to the ticonic. And it's got great sightlines back and forth. It's a wide paved road, and they'll be able to come in and access this way. So you'll be ending up coming into this area here. That will eliminate the need to come off of Campfire Road at the main entrance, where, as you know, it's very tight and twisty. So everything will come in that way. We have contractor parking up in here. We have a staging area in here. These would be core logs that would be installed here. That's to protect this wetland. These are, this is wetland B and C. And, you know, we have silt fencing all down below. This is all silt fencing to protect the area. Any place where we're creating steep slopes to create basins or graded slopes, it's going to be covered with slope mats and seeded. The structures will all be protected during construction. And, and finally, this is a diversion. This will be a core log diversion, and that's to, we have a hill coming down here, which is sending water this way. So the idea is, while we have this fresh open, this is a large area, obviously, that we have to grade out and open the soil. So what we'll be doing is installing a core log. The board's familiar with those, the coconut fiber logs. They're very dense. They get staked in place. They stay in place. Takes about five years for them to decompose. The plantings grow right through them. So what you end up is, is like a bump. And that bump, as the water will come down, it will come down, and it'll travel around it, and it'll, it'll go around it. So it protects the freshly graded area from getting blown out. So, let's go to Hugh, the next one, please. This one, we can just quickly, look, look at this one. This is, is just the steep slope plan. There is, there are, we, you know, have to work on areas that are, are regulated steep, steep slopes. We have identified them. And, you know, as a result of the erosion control plan and protecting them during construction and, and afterwards with the planting, you can see where we're creating these steep slopes all in this area here. This is all going to be heavily planted. And we went back and forth with the ERB several times on this. So we have really created a very dense planting in this area. But the areas of the steep slopes, the steepest slopes are what you see in the darkest areas. And when you see this line going around, this is our grading limit line, so anything in there, anything you see shaded, those are the regulated steep slopes that are going to be disturbed. But as I said, as, you know, with the erosion control plan, we'll be protecting them, and the long-term stabilization to the slopes will come through plantings. So we could move to the next one. And this is the mitigation planting plan that has, that has been developed. And the mitigation planting plan not only, not only compensated for the areas we're working in here, but what happened was, the, the parking lot on the Campfire Club was paved about 10 years ago. The town engineer noted that and felt that it should be brought into compliance with current regs. So he requested that the stormwater runoff, the difference from a runoff perspective from a gravel lot to a paved lot, obviously, there's going to be more, more runoff. So he asked that that be accommodated in the stormwater management system, which has been done. In addition to that, because this portion of the parking lot falls within the buffer, we also had to provide mitigation for that. And we did that by, this is a utility quarter right here that comes from Campfire Road, and this is where the overhead lines come in. This is where the water line comes in. And Steve Coleman felt that it was pretty sparse in there and felt that it would benefit from some understory planting, so we added all that. And then, of course, the, the main mitigation plantings, this is the wetland area right in here. So you can see, we've got a very dense layer of planting all through here, and this is the stormwater basin. And these were the steep slopes that we had to create, to create that basin. So we really have a lot of dense planting. We do have the new plantings in the parking lot, the new tree plantings we'll be putting in, as well as plantings around the building. So we've, we've, we've put a lot of work into that, and we believe the planning board is satisfied with it. This is the parking plan that was developed. And the parking plan was developed as a combination of uses. We went through the code, and because there wasn't a specific club use in the parking code, what we did was, we looked at the code and we looked at the various uses that are going to occur, and we felt that the main use is probably most similar to a restaurant, because what the club does is, it functions really, their, their members come in typically on Wednesdays for lunches and on weekends. They only have three major events during the year. They have a spring outing, I think a fall outing, and a winter get-together. At that point in time, that's when they have large groups, maybe 150 to 200 people. And that was talked about, how is that going to be handled? And it was agreed that for those three large events, because the sighting distance at this twisty, this is the main entrance, because the sighting distance was, was kind of not ideal in this area, that the club has agreed for those three, for those three events in the year, they will bring everybody in through the service entrance, if you will, because of the sightlines are so much better. They'll come through, and then we have, we need about 88 spaces, I believe. And we can get the majority of them right here to where they are now. We had to reconfigure because we had some, some tree islands. But there's also, there's also some, when they need overflow parking, they pull right up on the grass in this area, in this area. There's also some parking here. There's also a little road right here where some parking. But whatever parking can't be accommodated here for those three larger events, we'll be right here at the, at the maintenance barn. And what they'll do is, they'll just shuttle the members back and forth with a little cart. So, and again, when we calculated the parking, we took the most conservative use, which was the restaurant use, and that's how we came up with our number for the 88 spaces.
Are you having to improve the roadway from, to get to the parking lot, or is it all there?
It's already paved.
All there? Okay.
So at the last planning board meeting, what we had was...
Jerry, can you speak into the mic, please?
Yeah. The, as we went through the review process with the planning board, and we resolved all the environmental issues in terms of the wetland intrusions and the mitigation and the steep slopes and the drainage, that was all pretty much settled. The one thing that the board was concerned with, you know, again, the site distance down, this is the site distance down by, down by the ticonic. This is, this is great both ways. They had to do a little bit of clearing here, which they've already done. So they've got great site sighting and stopping distances both ways. When you come to the main entrance and looking, if you're pulling out, you're looking this way, we did some, the club did some clearing here, and they've got adequate sighting and stopping distances this way. But the problem was going this way. And it was, it was very short. You could only, in the existing condition, you could only see to here, which was about 60 feet. And according to Ashtoe, you need about 125 feet, and that's over here. So what has to happen is that this is an area of primarily rock. It's probably at the steepest point, six feet, and then it goes down and goes down. So the club has agreed to remove this section of rock. You can't see it very well on the sections because they're kind of small, but what happens is, this is going to be chipped out. And, and it's going to be chipped out to the extent that you're going to be able to look from here to here, and you'll be, have a clear line of sighting distance for a car coming, as well as the car coming up, we'll be able to see a car pulling out. So that seemed to satisfy the, the planning board and the town engineer. So that seemed to be the last of the, of the permitting.
In this area at the bottom here, what has to take place in terms of ongoing maintenance? Is that, how are you clearing that area and what will be done?
Well, the, the club personnel, maintenance staff has already gone and cleared it. And as part of the planning board review, it was requested that we develop a maintenance plan, if you will, to periodically go in there and keep the vegetation down, and that will have to be prepared. It hasn't been done yet, but it's going to be prepared and filed, and then I believe that's going to be, go on the records, on the land records, that that is something that they're going to have to do on a continual basis, probably every year.
Okay. So the, for those three large events, when the, the cars will come in from the secondary access point and then park up in the 88 spaces, when the event is over, how will they egress the property? Through the main gate or back through the other gate?
Back through the other gate.
Back, back through the gate, so much they can.
The service gate.
Their service gate. Okay.
And another, another thing we will be preparing, and it was requested by the planning board and the, and the town planner, is that we will be preparing a document that will go to the, go to the police department, alerting them when these events are taking place and what measures have been taken, so everyone's on board and everyone knows what's happening.
Do you have a lighting plan for that roadway to, is that sufficient for the cars to be able to see to get in and out?
There is lighting on that back road.
There is?
All through that back old barn entrance there.
All right. And that's sufficient now, you think?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. There is sufficient. Go ahead.
Yeah. I think it's just, it's just the details page. Yeah. These are just the construction details, or, you know, how things are, are going to be constructed. A couple of things that were requested by the town engineer. The building is designed in an Adirondack style, and there will not be any gutters on the building. Rather, what's going to happen is, there's going to be a, you know, a two or three-foot wide drip strip around the base of the building. It'll have a perforated pipe in the bottom of it that will pick up the water coming off of the roof. And it's, that's shown right here, that, so that drip strip, this building will drop down. We'll have a drip strip with a perforated pipe, and that goes all, all the way around the building. It comes, it starts here, it goes this way, it goes this way, this way, it comes this way, comes here, it goes out and gets out. So that's how we'll be collecting all that. This is a detail of how the, the cross-section right through here, what that would look like. And what happens is, here is the new council hall. This is the raised walkway here. That's this wall right here. And then you drop down, and this is one side of the loop, which is right here. And then this is the specimen tree we talked about, that we're trying to preserve right here. Then we have the other, then we have the low wall. And you can see that this is the area that, this is, this is the grade up here, and, you know, this is where the fill is going to be. And this is the large boulder wall. The property has a lot of boulders on it. There was actually an old quarry there. So they have access to a lot of boulders, and it, it's a very rustic site, and they'd like to keep it rustic. So this is going to be constructed as a boulder wall. That's this feature right here. And then it's hard to see, but the perforated pipes we talked about, they're right here, and they're coming right here. These are the perforated pipes right here. You can see them going, going across. That section of pipes, that's right there. This is the staked core log. So it's just, you know, pretty standard stuff. You know, how it's all getting put together. There's also a underdrain under this whole driveway here. You can, hard to see, but this, what we're going to do is, we're going to take the road base, and we're going to put a V-notch in the bottom of the road base, because this is all gravel. And what will happen is, the water will drop down to the V-notch. We've got a perforated pipe in there, and that will tie into also the drainage system. So any excess water that gets under this driveway will get picked up in the underdrain and taken out to the wetland area. So that's kind of where we are with it.
Any others, Jerry?
Yeah, I think you can go back to three.
Any members of the board have any other questions?
I have one question. I remember from the site visit we took that the pond seemed to be quite open. Now you're going to be putting a lot of, a lot of bushes, is that right, on the coast of that?
Yeah. Yeah, that was really schematic, what you had seen previously. And I remember one of the planning board members felt that it was, kind of looked a little rectangular, and could, could we work with that? And we have. So once that gets, once that area gets, that detention pond, this, this you'll never see. This is buried. This is, this'll just look like a meadow right, right here. This is buried. But overflow from here comes in here, and also some of the runoff from the parking lot. Some of the, I think the runoff from the building goes right into here. The runoff from the parking lot bypasses and comes into this area. But once we're done, we'll have a seed mix in the bottom. But it'll be planted very heavily all the way around on the interior slopes, as well as the backside of it, it will be planted. So when this is all done, and once it grows in, I don't think you're going to see it.
Yeah, no, I was just more thinking that you'd sort of lose the character of the place that you have now. I mean, now you have a nice view over that pond. I guess you're sort of going to have to lose that through necessity.
Oh, you mean the pond in the back?
Yeah.
Oh, no, that's, that's, that's down here. That's, that stays.
So that's not being...
No, that's not being touched.
All right.
That's, that's not being touched.
We refer to that as the main lake. That's the big body of water up back of the, of the main.
Right. Yeah, that's, that's right here.
Okay.
Nothing changes there whatsoever.
Okay.
Sabrina, was there anything you want to say about this?
Well, I wanted to add that the parking management plan that's to be submitted before the large events is also to be copied to the building inspector. So it's the police department and the building inspector. In addition, the, the main changes that you see were due to the planning board's review. They are entertaining a referral memorandum back to you at their December 5 meeting next week. And the last point of note is that last night, the town board changed the parking code requirements to allow you to assign the parking requirements as part of your special exception use permit to this application. So it's completely within your jurisdiction at this point.
Okay.
And to let you know that some of the issues that Jerry summarized tonight were commented on by the planning board. The sightline discussion, as well as the parking, were also reviewed by the planning board, even though it was not necessarily under their purview of the environmental permitting.
Did they agree with the similarity to the restaurant use?
Yeah, they agreed that, yeah, that the parking is represented on the plans. They were supportive of, as well as the other changes and the mitigations that have been provided.
So the numbers of the spaces is, are adequate?
Correct. And staff reviewed it as well. So what, the way that they proportioned it based on uses and what was settled on, how many were land banked, were based on the active use on the site and would be appropriate.
So based on the representations, that it would be 150 to 200 max?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, but based on their membership and their largest events and the size of the restaurant. And if you look at the actual breakdown, the plans show, based on the different code requirements for parking, for the restaurant use, for the storage space, you know, for the actual meeting room space, it proportions the parking and what they're providing in the sense of real spaces as compared to land banking, if ever necessary, is adequate parking for the use that they're proposing.
Would it be appropriate for us to deal with, should we get to a point, a condition that might require them to come back to the planning, to the zoning board, should their membership increase beyond, you know, the, you know, the limits they've indicated?
You can, you can incorporate that as a condition into your resolution. They clearly state and have provided information that their membership has not changed, and they don't foresee it changing.
Have to change their bylaws or...
Exactly. If they, if they have more membership, they will be in violation of their special use permit and will need to come back regardless, so...
This permit is only to Campfire as organizational...
Correct.
...to any successors.
Correct.
Is there any member of the audience who wishes to make any comment on this application? No? Okay. Anything else, Eric?
I would, you should leave the public, I would continue the public hearing until next month, because some items that still need to be taken care of.
Right. I had, for your board's information, I had included a Part II analysis in accordance with the State Environmental Quality Review Act for your review and consideration. Based on the information submitted, I filled out that Part II. You were provided more recently with a copy of the revised environmental assessment form that was provided to the planning board based on the changes in the plan. So all of the documentation you have is relevant and up to date. But that document is subject to, the Part II is subject to your review. to, the Part II is subject to your review. From that point, if you agree with the Part II, my office would prepare a Part III, a determination of significance per your guidance.
So you could, you could continue the public hearing, you can make a motion to continue the public hearing. I don't know if there's any other items the, the board needs to proceed with at this point, but we continue it until we get the referral memo. The only other thing is if the board wants to direct council and the planning department to draft a resolution for next meeting, if you're comfortable with possibly considering that next meeting. So that would be the potential.
Have we given you enough in, in the way of conditions and that sort of thing, that you can prepare something?
Staff, as part of the planning board's review of the project, conditioned, created conditions that relate to the environmental aspects of the project. As far as the special use conditions, we have enough information to work up conditions associated with the criteria that fall under the special exception use permit. So we have enough, I think, to put together a draft for the board's consideration.
Okay.
Just given the short, I think, given the short scope of time before the next meeting, we'll, we'll do the best to get it, get it drafted to appoint that time.
Circulate that prior to the meeting.
Correct.
Yeah, and, and if we don't have enough time, given the short timeframe, then we would continue it until January.
So at the earliest, it would be January before the board would?
No, it's possible if we have a draft resolution that the board believes is acceptable, sets forth the conditions the board believes are appropriate, and the environmental determination is also acceptable to the board. You could act on all of them at the December meeting, it's just a?
If we did, and, and we were in agreement basically on some additional things to be added, we could do a informal vote. Would that be sufficient for the planning board to move ahead without our actual formal approval?
You could act tonight, I mean, if you want to give us an opinion tonight, which, which direction?
No, I was thinking about the next meeting after we saw their, and, you know.
The, I don't know if this is correct, but you would need to complete the SECRE review for the planning board to take action. At the, at the very least, I'm not sure if they need a resolution, I'd leave that to council. But I know that you need to carry forth and do your environmental determination in order for the planning board to?
When are you going to complete Part III?
I can attempt to do it by your December meeting.
Okay, if you do it, if you do, then we can complete SECRE at the same time.
Correct. Yeah, the, the intention is if we were to come up with a draft resolution, we would also have the draft environmental determination for you to consider at the same time.
Okay.
And the board would have to, should direct us tonight, whether, what your, you know, if you believe there, there are any substantial adverse impacts with respect to the environment, and whether your, you know, your opinion is leaning toward approval of the special use permit, given what's been presented to you over, you know, the last year period. I don't know if that's something you're comfortable doing tonight, or you feel you have to wait till the next meeting to give us that direction, so.
What do you think, Tony?
I'm, I'm comfortable with you preparing a draft resolution and going ahead with the Part III. I think what's being presented to us tonight is, I'm comfortable with 99% of it. I think they're doing a good job. I think they've been good neighbors, and we should try to help them as much as we can.
I, I would advise if there's any, you know, we, we heard one condition that was presented, wanting to make sure that we address the membership information in the resolution. If there are any other concerns that the board has or would like to highlight in the resolution, that would be helpful to hear tonight, so we can incorporate that in.
The only thing I didn't hear was how they were going to enforce, I'm sorry, it's on?
It should be, you just need to talk close to it.
Click the button at the bottom.
There you go, it's on.
It's not working.
Sorry.
Is the light on? There it is, I know.
Oh, here we go. Now it's working, okay.
Thank you.
The only thing I didn't hear and, about was how they were going to enforce the use of the alternative entrance when they're having their big events. Will there be some kind of enforcement procedure in place?
That's why?
I know they said they were going to mention to the police, notify the police department about their event and the, what's going to happen, but?
Somebody there directing traffic.
And they said after the event, everybody is supposed to exit through the, the access point that has the best site plan, a site views. So are you going to close the main entrance while that happens, or are you going to have somebody there?
Yeah, and?
So we should have something in, in our resolution stating that in these specific times, these special events, that there will be some kind of enforcement procedure for the entrance of the?
For maintaining the parking management plan. I, I mean, ultimately, that, that's where the, the requirement to submit a parking management plan to the town, to the police, and to the building inspector arose from, from the concern during the, the special events where they change the entrances and the parking requirements, that something be documented that can be enforced. And I think you're, we can incorporate a condition in, whereas they must do onsite enforcement during those events to make sure, or blockade to make sure that there's things in that management plan that call for making sure that that plan is adhered to.
I think, I think that would be beneficial for all concerned to have something like that in it.
We can do that.
We will, we will be developing that and listing all the protocols and for review by your board, as well as the, the planning board, to make sure that everybody's on the same page.
Yeah, we can, we can highlight that.
Well, in the private clubs, when they have big events, sometimes we'll, we'll put out a notice to the police department that they're looking for, you know, the higher, you know, the, you can't, they have to be off duty or whatever, but they, they're happy to come and provide useful guidance.
We'll work on a list of protocols and make that, that backup entrance, the, the main entrance and exit, and frame the times in for when that structure of the building is being used at that capacity, which is really dinnertime. It's, you know, it's, it's roughly from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m., but we can work on the timing and logistics that for you.
So I think it would be helpful to poll each of the board members, just to give the, the planning board, the planning department and our board and council direction as far as the resolutions, if there's anything else, but as long as everybody's in, in agreement with respect to the direction.
Howard, anything else?
I'm comfortable with draft revolution, resolution at this time, and we can always fine tune it if need be.
Okay. Same with me.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm okay.
Yeah, good.
Okay.
So that'll make a motion that we continue the public hearing over until next month and authorize the town planner and council to start drafting the resolution. I say?
I'll say.
Pollists in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay, Cheville? Cheville, did I pronounce that right? Which one is it? Cheville, Cheville?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening, Michael Serenyan, I'm attorney for Renana Cheville, and she's here with me. Her architect, Patrick Crook, is here as well. And so we're here tonight pursuant to your town zoning codes, which permits as a accessory, permitted accessory use, group instruction pursuant to a special use permit. Renana is, gives, conducts cooking technique classes to young children, as young as two years old, up to 18, but the, the primary age span or range is two to 12. I have some photographs of her and some of her students I'd like to ask her. She currently?
I'm sorry, is this used currently in practice?
Well, not at this location. She, she operates her cooking school in a rented leased facility in Pound Ridge.
I see.
She would like to now move it to her property where she and her family reside. She has had great success and gets great reviews, and I'm going to hand up some of the reviews, and she got a nice write-up in, in the local magazine.
So what are the issues that we should be considering?
Yeah, the issues are that, well, I believe we comply, our plan is to comply, and we can comply with all of the, the conditions that are special to group instruction, but one, and that is that the language of the code seems to read that it should be in the principal dwelling. The problem with the principal dwelling on, on the site is that because it's cooking techniques for young children, the, the family's kitchen, Renana's family's kitchen, really isn't adequate. You need special sized or high food preparation areas, and you need specialty cooking equipment so that it's safe for the children, and you need a lot of room. So there's a, an existing garage on the property. I have these photographs of the garage. And the proposal is to, and I'll have Patrick Crook in a minute describe the existing conditions in the garage and what the proposed interior modifications would be. There's got to be no exterior expansion of the garage footprint. But Patrick will describe that in a minute. But the idea is that the garage space would allow Renana to set up a very effective and workable space for cooking techniques. So we need an area variance, because we could do it without any variance whatsoever in the main kitchen, but to do it in the garage, we, we need a variance on that. So that's one of the portions of the variance application. In addition, even though it's an existing garage, it's got a CO, and we're not proposing any exterior expansion of it or modification of the exterior. Your building inspector advised, took an opinion you have as, as ruling, that because we're proposing a non-garage use of it, and it does not comply with current setbacks, rear and side yard, that we have to ask for those. But again, we're not proposing to expand the building or move the building, it's an existing CO garage, and we're not going to make any exterior changes there. So I think those side yard and rear yard variances for an existing structure that's not going to change or be moved are quite minimal. So those are, oh, and then there's the area, because we exceed the formula of no more than one quarter, and I'll let Patrick address that. So let me have him just present that, and then I'll address the legal issues of the zoning variances.
Bring these over here so I can point and speak at the same time. As Michael mentioned, the existing building?
I'm sorry, sir, if you could just introduce yourself, please.
Oh, sorry, Patrick Crook, the architect on the project. As Michael mentioned, the existing building is a garage, it was constructed as a garage. The first floor has two garage doors on the front, one garage door on the back, there are two posts in the center. The structure will remain its existing size, existing condition, it will be insulated and brought to code as a finished space for this use. The garage doors on the front and rear will be removed. There are new glass doors, glass doors being added to the front at the main teaching area. The garage door on the back is being removed and replaced with a, a person door, so people can get in and out of the rear. There are no other exterior changes proposed in size, it remains as it is. The second floor is unfinished and will remain that way at this point. The question on the square footage, you're allowed one quarter of the floor area of the house to be used for this use. Our measurements off of the survey show that the current footprint of the house is about 1,768 square feet, one quarter of that being 442 square feet. The garage is 609 square feet, so the difference would be about 209.
The garage, right? Yeah. When you say for this use, what use are you talking about?
It's not, it's not the house, it's a quarter of the square footage of the structure you're using, or 400 square feet, whichever is less.
Okay.
So it's not, you're not taking the house, it's going to be of the garage.
It's quarter of the square, square footage of the 609 then.
Correct, or 400.
I apologize.
Okay. So I'm, I'm sorry, go, go back, what, what was the point that you were just making about the footage?
It's a section of the zoning code for this use.
Which use?
Group instruction.
Group instruction.
Correct.
All right, zoning code limits the use to one quarter of the square foot of the building in which it's occupied. I mistakenly thought it was the, the house on the property.
Is that commercial zoning then?
No, this is our, our one acre, this property is R1A.
Right.
And, and group instruction is a permitted accessory use in an R1A, or in fact, all your residential districts. And we do meet the, the special standards under 63-43008. A, the maximum number of, her pupils shall be limited to five, no more than five at any one time. And B, the off-street parking, there's ample area there for off-street parking, and, and the exact parking layout will be taken up with the planning board, and we're confident we can satisfy any concerns the planning board has with regard to the, the parking. We know, a neighbor has submitted a letter, our neighbor's to the north, in which they expressed some concerns about buses dropping off children down at the bottom of the shared driveway. There, there'll be no bus delivery of, of students here, this is strictly parents dropping off their child or children, and then picking them up. The?
So you said the, there's a limitation in the code for a maximum of five at a time?
Of any, no matter what the group instruction subject matter is. Our subject matter is cooking techniques, but it's five, and we're going to adhere to that, obviously.
Are there any additional licensing or code requirements that deal with your particular use, which is cooking and using?
Yeah, the health, the health department has, has approved her, her current use at in Pound Ridge, and we have a letter dated March 22 of 2016, I think that was part of the record. So yes, the board of health has to be satisfied, and they will make inspections.
So they will inspect, come and inspect, make sure the equipment and machinery, everything is properly placed?
That's correct.
You, you mentioned that they wouldn't be using a bus, they wouldn't have people busing, but I think that's not the, the letter is speaking about the safety of their children when they come off the bus?
Right.
And cars coming out?
Well, the, we?
And, and before you answer that question, could you tell us about the hours of operation? Are they fixed, or?
Yeah, Renana, why don't you explain? Yeah?
Hi.
Hi.
Jordan. Okay.
If you could just introduce yourself, please, thank you.
Okay, I'm Renana Cheville, I own Fiddlehead's Cooking Studio. At the moment, I have four classes a week, two in the mornings at 10:30 to 11:30, and two classes in the afternoons from 4 until 5. So the hours are very limited, it's not a space that is open to the public all the time.
So just that, Michael was going to bring up the point, I think, so one of your neighbors, I guess, has a concern about their children going to a school bus or leaving a school bus and so forth.
Right, so I, I actually?
It sounds like the morning, you start much later.
Much later.
So they're gone.
Right.
And during the evening, perhaps you're continuing far beyond the point where they would get home, it sounds like.
Yes.
But don't let me put words in your mouth.
Yeah, no, that, that sounds correct. I, I spoke to my neighbors about that issue.
Right.
I think their main concern was the use of their side of the driveway. It seems to be a circular driveway, but actually, one part of it does not belong to us, it belongs to them. And I totally agree that we can put a barrier there for, for my clients not to use that part of the, of the driveway. And yeah, I think that, I totally agree with that.
So the, the driveway, I'm, I'm looking at the, this small site plan that was provided, it looks like the shared driveway is paved?
It is paved.
And the other part of the driveway, which is on? And the other part of the driveway, which is on your property, is gravel, not-
So part of it is paved and part of it is gravel at the moment. We do plan to pave the whole thing.
Okay, you'll need some type of approval for that.
Yeah.
But, no, but the point I was getting to, it seems like you might, since that is a circular driveway, you might avoid any possible issues with your neighbor by just having all your clients enter and, and leave from-
Our driveway.
Your driveway.
Yes, absolutely.
That would be an acceptable condition for any special use permit.
Okay.
So I, because I, I believe the, the setback variances and even the, the area, area variance, the one quarter standard are, are really de minimis. I think the, the issue I'd like to, the variance I'd like to address is simply whether there's any adverse impact on the neighbors or on the character of the neighborhood, whether we do this in her kitchen, which she would, can do as of right, or we do it in the barn. And I would submit there'd be absolutely no difference.
You'd still need a special use permit even if you did it in your own kitchen?
No, I understand, but I wouldn't need a variance.
Correct. You'd still come before the board for a special use permit, then.
Right. So I, I don't believe that the, the fact that we, we're gonna do it in the garage is gonna have any greater or different impact on neighboring properties or residential uses than if it were conducted inside the kitchen. And I, I'm sure the board's familiar that by law, a special use permit, a special use under an ordinance is tantamount to a legislative finding that, that group instruction in this case is not incompatible with a residential neighborhood. And, and in fact, her operation will not be incompatible.
As long as you meet all the conditions of the special use permit.
That's correct.
That's the-
Absolutely. But again, the difference between the location in the, in the kitchen of the main residence or the garage, I don't think is going to have any impact. And I, I believe that's essentially the, the nature of the application. We are gonna have to go to planning board, should we obtain the relief and the special permit that we're seeking from your board.
Go ahead, Er.
I think there were a couple of issues from the planning department's perspective that may need, that would need to be addressed, primarily the, the parking issue. I'll, I'll let Sabrina address that, and then we have the issue of, you know, compliance with SECA as well that we're gonna have to discuss, so.
Yeah, and, and we need to refine, like, the procedural, whether or not you have to go to planning board, whether it can be handled under the special exception use permit. We have to resolve some of those issues. One of the things that's needed for your special permit review is a site plan, which depicts the property, the treatment of the driveway, whether or not you're putting up blockades. All of the hours of operations and your class information should be placed on that site plan. And, you know, the materials of the, of the gravel driveway, if you're planning on paving it as part of this application, that needs to be indicated on the plan. But most importantly, I believe in the description, there's one time period with the young children that the caretakers remain on the property. So it's, it's not just a pull-in, drop-off operation and pickup operation, that there's actually parking on the site. So we, you would need to identify on the site adequate parking for the number of cars for those time periods that the people will be on the premises. And so that's something that is needed to be reflected on the site plan in order for the zoning board to begin to consider a special use permit.
Right, before there can, I think we need the site plan before there can be a referral to the planning department.
And before that you can do it, you know, in, institute your lead agency status.
Okay.
So what, what's in the garage now? What do you, what do you use the garage for?
Just storage at this point.
No vehicles?
No, we park outside, there's enough room.
So you're, that's, that's, that's a problem. I mean, it's not a problem, but we need to have that addressed, that, that there's enough room for your personal vehicles as well as these, these student drop-off and pickup vehicles. So we'd need that, we'd need that addressed. The other thing, I, I'm a little confused about the square footage.
Okay. What's- What is the square footage of the area that is, is gonna be put into use?
Square footage of existing garage is six hundred and nine square.
Six oh nine.
Got that, but-
But you're only allowed to use a quarter of that?
Quarter.
Okay, which brings you down to about a hundred and fifty-two. And what, and what are you proposing to use, the whole six oh nine?
The whole area, yes.
Now, that's a pretty good-sized variance that we have to consider. And we're talking about, what, four hundred and fifty plus or minus square feet?
All right, of interior space with no exterior-
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know, but the code, the code is the code. And we have to weigh, weigh whether this is a substantial variance or not.
I would, I would, I, I agree numerically, it sounds substantial, but I think the code was written within mind it being in the main residence. So then it was trying to find proportion for the use, the area to be used for group instruction or whatever versus the rest of the, the residence. Here, we're in a garage. I don't think we have any competing use other than-
And I have, I have one other concern for the future. I mean, you may think you're gonna be there forever, but that's not always the case. And if and when you leave, our, our variance is run with the land. So now we've got a building that's been used semi or, or semi or commercially on a piece of property, and the next person that comes in may want something that could be a problem. So I think we need to be very careful about where we go here.
The variance would be restricted to group instruction, you're right. It would run with the land, but then I think they knew, they would need to apply for a new special use permit at that point, yeah.
What I'm saying is when we do write our, our special use permit, we know, have to be very careful to word it so that it is not open-ended and doesn't create-
Pretty specific.
A, a future problem for the neighborhood or the town itself.
That's fine.
So we gotta be very, very aware of that.
We wouldn't have a problem. We're not looking to somehow turn this into a non-conforming use for some financial gain on resale. That's not what this is about.
And I assume you're, you would be in agreement to limiting the number of classes and the number of students?
Number of hours, right.
Number of hours.
The number of hours?
Yep.
Yeah, I, I told you when, I'm, I am open a very limited amount of hours. And I don't intend to make this a space that is open to the public all the time, or people can drop in for classes every day or any-
Will you limit the number of children?
Yeah, so it is limited to five, I think, under-
The code limits it to five, maximum.
Yeah.
But the, but the board has the authority to set conditions on the number of classes that are held and the hours that the classes are held, if the applicant is-
Okay.
Representing that this is the maximum number of classes you're gonna have in perpetuity, you know, without coming in to request an amendment of the special use permit conditions, if that would be the case.
Howard's concerned you're gonna turn into Amazon.
Yeah.
You know, you're doing very well, and there's multiple classes, you know.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application? No, okay. So are you clear on-
Yes, we're gonna make the, put the site plan together with the additional information, and we'd like to come back and see you in December. What would be our filing deadline to do that, two weeks before?
Yeah.
Two weeks before? And your meeting date is?
Sunday, twenty.
Okay. Thank you all.
Earlier next month than normally, but because of the holidays, so if you get hung up, we can always put it off to January, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next is Chang.
Hi. My name is Wei Wei Chang, resident in, at twenty Witlaw Lane in Chapakua.
Okay. And you're here this evening because?
To apply for a zoning variance for a location of a shed.
Okay.
And the code requirement of fifty feet setback from the back of the lot, and thirty-five feet from the side. And I'm applying for, to install the shed at a location twenty feet from the back and twenty feet from the side, east side.
And how did you come by choose, how did you come to choose this particular location?
I, on the original application, there is a survey showing this location is basically a small enclave area within the wooded area on the corner. And in this particular location, the shed is hidden from view from the, basically block off the view from the street and from neighbors on the south side by a large group of sugar maple on the south. And on the north, also there are wooded areas and the landscape buffer zones blocking it from view from the north, from other neighbor, on the north as well. And on the, on the east side, it's neighboring the twelve, yeah, twelve Witlaw Lane property. And I have a twenty feet of area, there is already a row of lilac cypress planted ten feet from the border. And we, right now, it's just about a five, a five feet or six feet tall, and within a few years, they should have grown up to the ten feet tall, same height with the shed roof, roof ridge, and blocking the view from, it's evergreen, so it's gonna block the view from the twelve east, I mean, the twelve Witlaw Lane property as well. And if this, if we do not put it in this particular location, because of that large group of sugar maple, which is located roughly fifty feet from the backside, and thirty feet also from the east side, and I basically have to move the shed somewhat of seventy-five feet from the backside to stay away from the, the large sugar maple groups. And thirty-five to forty-three feet from the east side, which will put the shed squarely in the middle of expensive lawn area. It's conspicuously visible from the street, and visible from, even from a neighbor across the street, because their property is on the high end across the street. And it, it does not offer any benefit to the twelve Witlaw Lane neighbor as well, because on that particular location, it's directly facing the twelve Witlaw Lane's house side windows. And there is only a few small deciduous trees between the, the shed. And in this, I call it alternative location, which is inferior to the proposed location. In this location, basically, there is no screening between this shed and the twelve Witlaw Lane. And it's impossible to plant new trees to block it either because of existing trees, unless we clear out the land to plant new trees. So, so overall, basically, the, the proposed location would be a much better choice than the, which is, as I said, tucking in the corner of a wooded area, except that it would need a variance. Yeah.
Which is this an area, is this a, a property that you're familiar with, or?
Yeah, I've been by the property. It's, it's open, they did get a tree permit and a filling grain permit to regrade the backyard.
Right.
I'm trying to think. I don't remember what the screening looks like you're saying about the plants, I couldn't tell you. I don't know if you dropped off pictures?
I have some pictures here to show the location.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are these the same black and white photos that we have? Or, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
The survey shows, I have a, a detailed survey drawing as well compared to the location.
Okay.
But this picture basically shows-
Take the microphone off.
I'm sorry.
You can take it off and carry it with you.
Oh, okay, yes. Pull it out.
That's better.
So this picture shows that this is, this is a proposed location behind the, the group of trees, and it doesn't show the three-dimensional, the kind of effect, but these three trees are actually pretty large. And if I, if I can put it in here, this is just roughly twenty feet from the border, and behind the three trees, this side is the street. And this is the prefecture, the shed delivered here. Once it's approved, I will just put it right in here. And if this is not, is rejected, this would be an alternative location, which is right in the middle of the lawn, and it's facing the street directly. Yeah, and if from, from this location looking that way, that's a twelve Witlaw Lane neighbor, that's their window directly facing that. So this would be a much better choice, which is further back, all the way to the back almost.
And where is twenty Witlaw?
Twenty Witlaw is my house.
Oh, that's your house.
Yeah, twelve is the neighbor on the east.
Okay.
Yeah, and I have another setback.
I'm sorry, could I just ask? I'm sorry.
Okay.
Sixty-four Random Farms Drive, is that?
Oh, it, it's easier to show here. Sixty-four, this is twenty Witlaw Lane, my house.
Yes.
And this is sixty-four Random Farm Drive. So the shed actually will be on this side. I think I just talked with Mr. Penzer a little bit. I think she, he probably thought the shed would be on this corner, which will be her, his concerns, but it's actually on, on the east corner, not the west.
I see.
So what is, what's here? Is there, is there a house on that property?
Yeah, this is another house. The house is roughly here, about the same line here, and this is the heavily wooded areas.
Okay, and the neighbor hasn't made any comment?
They haven't made any comment. Yeah, actually, it's basically invisible from, from this side because of the heavily wooded area.
I see, I see.
Yeah, and, and they haven't made any comment yet, so.
This is not really our purview, but one of your neighbors wrote that you had left large logs that had been cut, I guess, close to or on the property line?
The, I have some logs from last year's clearing project. It was not clear to the, close to the property line, it's fifteen feet from the property line, out of the landscaping, regulated landscaping buffer zone for the R one A zoning lot. And there are some also on the backside of the property, on the, on top of the, there is, there's basically a stone, dry-laid stone wall.
Right.
On top of the wall, there are some of them, yeah.
I see.
Yeah, and also, I read that letter, if you're interested, I can address every single item in the letter as well. I mean, but I don't think most of the, I mean, most of the, the things mentioned is irrelevant to the, to the matter, but yeah, the meeting, so.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on this application?
Yes.
Yes, please come forward. Yes, please come forward. If you could surrender the microphone, sir, for just a moment? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Peter Houck. I'm the homeowner at twelve Witlaw Lane.
Okay.
The trees that were cut, first, I wanna sort of give you a background history. And I'm glad to see that Mr. Chang is finally showing up here for permits to do the work that he has done. He clear-cut the trees between my property and his, the entire length of his property line. He did not have a permit when he did so. I called the town because I was alarmed, because he didn't come to me, he didn't say he was cutting down all the trees, he cut down all the trees. They were not diseased, some of them may have been, but some of them were healthy trees. I called the town, you guys are so nice. Someone came out, they looked at the property, they issued the permit after the fact. Okay, then he leveled his property. Some of my neighbors called me and said, do you realize he's putting in a swimming pool? I went up to the street and I took a look, there was a large rectangular hole in the property he was putting in a swimming pool. I called the town, they went and inspected, they spoke to him, they filled in the hole. Now, when they filled in the hole, they did, for whatever reason, didn't put the rocks that they had excavated back into the hole. He, there is a line of trees, three feet high, about thirty yards long, mixed with boulders, which I now have to look at from my property line. At some point in time, I'm gonna wanna sell my house, it's gonna be very difficult to do so. He also has put things along that side of the property as well. He's got storage things, I don't know, it's an egg or a cooker or something, he's put over there now. There is gardening equipment that's along the stone wall on the back of his property, there's a plastic, like a Rubbermaid shed there now. He's also dug a hole in that corner of the property, and I was wondering what he was up to. Clearly, he wants to put the shed in that spot. It will be hidden from his point of view, and perhaps from the street.
I'm sorry, could I just interrupt?
Sure, please, go ahead.
So we all understand. What you're describing now, is that one of the two locations that he's described to us?
Yes, he's talking about the one where he doesn't wanna put it in the middle of his yard, obviously.
Right.
He wants to put it in the corner of his yard, which will be in full view of my house. Now, he also had promised to put in some trees that would cover the blight, the eyesore that he has created between his property and mine. What he did was he planted the trees on the other side, so it will basically cover his side. My fear is that he's gonna put this shed in, it's gonna be out of sight from his property, but it's in full sight of mine. I don't know what he's talking about, trees that he's planted, or in ten years, if I wanna sell my house in six years or seven years, that shed, and I have no faith that he is gonna maintain the shed or that area, so that it's not a further blight or eyesore from my point of view.
If, if we were to ask or require that he plant trees, shrubs, whatever the case may be, in the area that you're describing-
The shed.
So that, so that you were shielded from seeing the shed.
Sure.
Would that satisfy you?
Here's my issue.
Okay.
My understanding was he was gonna plant something that already, that was supposed to shield the line of logs and boulders from my property, and I have to come home every day and I look at it, it's depressing. It doesn't look like any other-
When did you get that impression that he was going to, to?
I spoke to the engineer here who went and issued the permit after he cut the trees down. And he had said to me at that time that he issued the permit-
That would be the environmental coordinate, the environmental coordinator.
Steve, right, right, right.
Right. Very nice gentleman. But he had said that, that he was going to- But he had said that, that he was going to plant something there to shield my view of the, all those cut trees and the boulders that were excavated from the yard.
I, I mean, there is a, and again, this is not our purview.
I understand.
But there is a tree replacement plan that does address some aspect of what you're describing.
For the shed, is that true or no?
No, this has to do with the tree removals that, that the town environmental coordinator issued the permit for.
Okay.
So, he, he issued a permit that allowed for trees, again, whether it was before the fact or after the fact.
It was after the fact.
To be removed. And, and there is also a tree replacement plan that has been documented. And.
What is the time, what is the timetable for that? What is the schedule for the replacing the trees?
When would the trees removed?
March. As I recall, it was last March. He's planted four very small trees in his yard. And again, they're on the, they're on his side of the line of logs.
The tree replacement plan would have required twenty-one trees on the property. So I, I'm not sure where, you know, that may be something the board wants to review.
I think, I, I think we have to make a site visit.
I'm sorry?
We have to make a site visit.
Okay.
And again, you know, I, I, I don't know anywhere else since, I don't.
I'm sorry, if I could just say this. So the point I wanted to make was, we're here to address this application.
I understand.
And to make whatever conditions are necessary in the board's view, so that it would be approved, for instance. And that could require all sorts of screening, a landscaping plan and so forth, which would, which would then be enforced by the town.
Okay. I, I would want to.
So I, I don't, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to make this one point.
Sure.
I, what Mr. Coleman's been involved with is really something that he is responsible for. We're here tonight to look at this application. It, it doesn't mean we haven't heard you and don't understand what you're saying. It may be that we can come up with a solution that satisfies you.
With respect to the shed.
With respect only to the shed.
That's the only thing that's before us, really.
I understand. And the only reason I bring up the other issues is because it's, it's a history.
Sure, we, we got it.
Okay.
No, no, we have that. Let's speak for a second. What, in your estimation, would be necessary or required to provide the type of screening of the shed?
Mm-hmm.
From your property?
If he can put plantings in place, which will hide the shed and whatever he intends to put around it, 'cause I'm, he, his yard is, there are things in the yard that he doesn't put away. I mean, all my tools are in my garage, right? That's why I store them out of sight of my neighbors. They're in his yard. Now, I assume that's why he wants the shed, that's fine. I don't want to see his shed.
I, I got it, I got it. So, Howard, one thought would be to ask the applicant to come back to us next month with a planting plan, a landscaping plan, if you will, that would show the board how the shed would be screened from this neighbor and any other neighbors that.
I mean, he did speak about how he would shield everyone else, but the one property that sounds like it was not really considered is my property.
Okay. Well, I mean, we're here this evening to, to hear you and to.
I appreciate that.
Try to address your concerns.
Okay. Now, just out of curiosity, if you know, what can I do about the other issues?
I'll, I'll talk to Steve about the trees, so.
And boulders.
You know, knowing that, and you can always give us a call.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, fine. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you.
May I speak to that?
Yes.
Can I just ask you one question?
Yeah.
You have two proposed locations.
Yes.
Is it possible to put it somewhere in the middle?
Uh, it's not two proposed locations. I call those locations a proposed location, which is a twenty-twenty setback that will require a zoning variance. And if the variance is rejected, I would have to put in, which I call alternative locations, which is not.
What about a thirty-thirty?
It's because of, if you look at the picture, there is that group, a large group of sugar maple right in the, the fifty to thirty setback location. And we talk about if we stay at least, say, ten feet from the tree, that will put the shed, the shed itself is about fourteen, twelve, fourteen feet long. That will basically put the shed seventy-five feet from the back.
What about the location where the trampoline is?
Uh, the, the trampoline is, that will also need a zoning require, a variation.
Be less.
It's, uh, it's basically the, uh, here's the matter, if you look at the, the survey map, uh, as Mr. Hauck just mentioned, that he wants some kind of screening and planting a plan there. Actually, I already have the plan, the planning plan in place. It's part of the, the tree replacement plan. There were already three Leyland seprits planted in there. One of the plants was damaged last year by the deer during the winter. I didn't see it until this, this spring. And it were basically eat it to the bear, to the bear, bear trunk. And I had to replace, actually, the whole property, after, since you mentioned about the tree replacement, ever since the project was done, I already planted a hundred and seventy-nine trees and shrubs in total. And this is detailed list of the planting log, if you're interested in it.
I'll tell you what, Mr. Chang, you know what, as I said, um, that's only minimal interest to the board.
I know, yeah. Yeah, but since Mr. Hauck mentioned about it, I just want to point out that I'm already carrying out the tree replacement plan and more than enough. And I'm still planting it. And including.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. What are your thoughts on providing screening of the shed as it relates to this neighbor?
Yeah. I, I addressed that, I mean, that, uh, the printout on the point four, that's basically addressed the twelve Whitlow's concern, because the proposed location is twenty feet on the east, from the east border, which twelve Whitlow is on my east. And the twenty feet right now, about ten feet or so from the border, I have three Leyland seprits already planted, which in time, within a few years, would grow to the height of the, the shed roof ridge, about ten feet high.
Okay.
Eight, nine feet or so. I can plant.
I don't want to care, I don't want to characterize this for you.
Yeah.
Or what you, are you saying that you think you have planted sufficient screening so that this should not be an issue as it relates to your neighbor?
I feel that's sufficient, but if Mr. Hauck wants more, I mean, we can talk about it. I don't know how much he wants. And, you know, I can say this.
Sounds like a great solution.
Yeah.
Why don't.
And I can change the, the species of the tree too. I mean, if you, I don't know what she like, but Leyland seprits are fast growing.
Sounds like a great solution.
Yeah.
The board would appreciate it if you would meet with your neighbor, come back to see us next month with a planting plan that you've discussed with your neighbor.
Mm-hmm.
And we will make that part of the record and we will evaluate your application at that time.
Okay.
Okay.
And this planting plan will only address the screening of the shed, right?
We're, yes, we're just concerned with the shed.
Because I feel like they have more desires and.
Presuming you don't make another application for something else. Yes, we're just dealing with the shed. Right?
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Thank you.
Do you make a motion to continue the public hearing?
To continue. Yep. I move that we continue the public hearing for the Wei Chang application.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Next is Walk.
Hi.
Hi. Hi, I'm Carol Walk. My husband's Steve Walk. We're also asking for a variance for setbacks from forty feet to thirty-five and a half feet and in the rear, and from twenty feet to eleven, a little more than eleven and a half feet for the addition of a shed to the property. The shed would be going in the location where our kid's jungle gym had been, so it's an area that was already marked out for something, which our neighbors had had for thirteen years now.
Are these your photos?
That is our photos. So that squared off area that you see is the location that we're talking about.
Where is your closest neighbor?
Um, so the closest neighbor is the one on the other side of the bamboo.
Oh, I see.
And I do actually have a, a letter from the neighbor across the street in, in support.
So, so not the neighbor on the other side of the bamboo, but the neighbor. No, no, that's fine. Okay, sure. No, 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 that's not necessary. Okay. Thank you.
This is the neighbor across the street in support?
In support. So the only one that doesn't have, like, total borders around her is the neighbor across the street, but she can't really see it because we're down a hill.
Before we go too much farther, Mr. and Mrs. Walk, there were some calculation errors in your application.
Okay.
They're, they're not severe enough to affect your application, but we do want them corrected. I corrected them for you.
Thank you.
I'll pass it to our secretary, if you have no objection.
No objection.
After the meeting, she will do the corrections.
Sure.
And that'll put everything in order.
Not a problem.
Okay, thank you. You want to say them, you can, but.
Yeah, I, I trust you more than I trust myself on that, so.
Okay.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address this matter?
Yes.
Yes, please come forward.
My name is Karen.
Hold on. We want you to speak into the microphone, so everyone in the town can hear you.
But he's not here.
You can take that off and speak right into it, or lower it down.
And if you would start by telling us your name, please.
Karen Johansson.
Okay.
I live behind.
Okay.
Right behind them. And I got the letter.
Yeah.
And I wasn't that concerned, but I was talking to some people, 'cause my husband passed away, and so he would be better at this. And my concern was that the shed is pretty big.
Okay.
Um, and are you, it's going where the big evergreen is? If I'm looking at your deck from the road, it would be on, on the left side. Yeah, I couldn't. Is the deck here, though, the deck that's facing me?
The deck is on the other side of the property from you. So here, I'll show you.
I couldn't tell where it was gonna, what I was gonna look at.
Sure, are you in the corner looking?
She's, and you're by the sobeks.
I'm right behind. So where the evergreen is, there I wouldn't see anything, but where you're gonna put it.
So you're over here, you're over here with the sobeks on your side, and then this is the deck, and we're putting it here on the other side by the citrons.
I still don't understand. Um, if, if, if I'm looking at your deck from my house, I'm from behind.
I have my paper.
Okay, is this gonna be on the right or the left of the deck?
It's gonna be on the far left.
Okay.
Yeah.
So on the far left, there isn't very much coverage.
Well, I think from her perspective, it'll be on the right.
Where the evergreen is, there would be some coverage.
So if you're looking at the deck over here.
From my house.
All the way over there.
Yeah, from your house.
Okay, she is, okay. The deck is here. It's gonna be all the way down here.
Okay. Down in the back of your house or over to the side?
All the way to the side.
Here's the street for Pine Cliff, and this is our house. And the deck is here. And the two properties that border us on Commodore are over here, right? So I think you're the, the.
I'm behind you, from what I can tell, I'm right behind you.
There's a family that has a dog right behind us with two little kids.
Okay.
That's your neighbor to the south.
Oh, I think she's thinking of the sobeks. She's behind the sobeks.
You're, the family that you're behind is the sobek family, I believe?
I don't, no.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm not any good with this. My husband would be bad.
Where is, where, show me, show me where her property is on this.
Your house is here. The sobeks are here, so if you look across, you see them.
It's the deck she's talking in.
If I look, if.
And this is where your shed's gonna be.
Right. There's a house here and there's a house here.
Right, right, there's a deck there.
And they have, there's a deck here.
They have all their little kids who run around in the summer and all that sort of thing. And where are we here?
This is our property.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And then I believe this is your property here.
One eleven is my property.
Right here, yeah, eleven, right?
Okay.
That's yours, right? So our deck is on this side, and the shed is going on that side. Right? So your property really backs up mostly against the sobeks?
That's the deck that you look at.
That's the deck you look at.
Okay.
Where the property.
You're over on the other side.
You can, you can see our deck.
I can see your house up there.
In the wintertime, you can, in the summertime, you can't.
Okay, okay, I wasn't, I wasn't sure, 'cause I can't read.
Yeah, you clearly see her deck, but you can, like he says, in the winter, see ours.
Okay. All right, so that's better. I thought it was the one behind me where if they put the shed right there, it was gonna be right there. Okay, all right, all right, so my mistake, so I, no.
I'm flattering.
That's all right, I just, people say you gotta ask all these questions and.
No, no, it's good, good questions.
And, you know, so that's why, 'cause I know the deck was a pretty good sized shed and I didn't want it right here or stuff.
Oh, no, they wanted me back your house, all the way on the corner.
Okay, okay, that's good.
Cheese on the other side.
Can she see it at all in the winter? No.
In, in.
In the summer, I know.
She can see one, watch a bit over here, the one right behind me, if it was there, it would be right in front of you.
Yes, right, right.
So, so you're good?
Are you satisfied?
You're okay?
Ma'am?
You're okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Very brave of you. I lost my papers.
Any other comments by the board?
I just have a question.
I just have a question. Is there any other location of the property that you could put this?
So we have a wall that you can see on the ground.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Walk, could you... Yes, thank you.
There's a wall right on the other side of where the deck...
This is the shed here, right?
Shed, and then there's a wall.
Okay.
And this wall is actually... It comes up, so it kind of steps up.
Right.
So the only way to do it would to take the whole entire thing and shift it to the other side. I don't have coverage as much between us and the Sobeks, but I have a lot of coverage of bamboo.
Do you feel this is more favorable for the neighbor?
It is, and it was for the jungle gym, too.
Okay.
There's so much bamboo there.
That even in the winter, you can't see through.
Well, we just have to, you know, make sure that there isn't a viable alternative to requesting a variance.
I understand. Okay. I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion at the application of Carolyn Stephen Walk for the construction of a shed that's going to be... I'm gonna round this to 35 because sometimes the measurements at the end don't come to the inch and we have to come back to us. So 35 feet from the rear yard where 40 is required and 11 feet from the side yard where 30... 20 feet is required. I make a motion that we approve that variance for the following reasons. The granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. The benefits sought by the applicant can't be obtained in any other way than granting of the variance. In this particular instance, it is not a substantial variance requested. Technically, this could be considered a self-created hardship, but the benefit to the applicant will far surpass any detriment to the neighborhood of the town. You can give us final survey measurements after the shed is constructed. And you have six months to start and one year to finish. We should approve.
I'll second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Have your variance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Myers?
Good evening. Bill Spade, architect, working for the Myers. The drawing here somewhat represents what we're proposing. We have an existing home that was built in 1967, and we're proposing to replace an existing exterior porch, which is outside of the kitchen, with a mudroom. The current house has a two-car garage attached to the end of the house, the left end, but there is no direct connection between the garage and the rest of the interior of the house. Presently, they have to come out of the garage onto this exterior side porch to then go in a side door to get into the main part of the house, which is the kitchen. So they would like to... And this is on that... This porch is on the front of the house. So they would like to construct an approximately six-foot-deep, actually nine-foot-deep mudroom in this... In replacement of this side porch. It's on the front of the house. The house was originally constructed presumably in '67, compliant with the front yard setback, which I believe was 50 feet at the time. New requirement is 60 feet. So the existing main part of the house is pre-existing non-conforming at approximately 51 to 52 feet from the front property line. The garage face and porch face of this part of the house is just beyond the 60-foot setback, but we're proposing to encroach into the setback to create this mudroom. So we're requesting a five-foot variance for the main part of the mudroom itself and the front steps... Replacement front steps out of the... This door into the mudroom would extend another three feet, so we need an eight-foot variance to the face of the steps up into the... Into this new mudroom. We don't believe it creates a visual negative effect in the community. It's captured within... Relatively within the footprint of the existing house. There's existing landscaping around this part of the house. I have photographs if you need to see that. And that landscaping will be replaced upon the construction of this mudroom. So I think that summarizes quickly.
Have you been wearing that hat ever since Aaron Rodgers was injured?
Well, yes, since I was a baby, right? Art Star. It's getting old. I keep having to redecorate it. There's a Wisconsin person in the side here, too.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application? No. Put it over here?
Yeah.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion. I'll move that the Myers' application for an eight-foot front yard variance...
For the steps.
I'm sorry, eight foot for the steps. Yep. And... I'm sorry, is it eight foot to the new front steps?
Correct.
And five feet to the wall of the addition, I see?
Correct.
Okay. Be approved for the following reasons. This is a legal non-conforming site. There will be no undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. The benefit cannot be sought by the applicant through other means. The variances are not substantial. There will be no adverse impact on the physical environment. There are no neighbors in opposition. You'll have six months to start and one year complete. And is there a foundation that's going in?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll...
Require a foundation survey prior to framing. Is that right? Just the final survey?
Final survey because where it's almost in line with the existing house.
Okay. And for these reasons, I move that we approve the application.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Have your variance.
Thank you very much.
Sunshine Children's Home?
Hi.
Good evening.
Want to put that...
Over there.
Maybe while he's setting that up, you could just set the stage for us.
Sure, happy to.
Yep.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Mark Weingarten. I'm a partner in the law firm of Del Bello, Donellan, Weingarten, Weiz and Whittaker, and it's my pleasure to be here this evening representing the Sunshine Children's Home and Rehab Center in connection with its request for an amendment to the site development plan, which was associated with the previously approved special permit... Special exception use permit, which permitted certain improvements and an expansion to the existing children's nursing home on the property located at 15 Spring Valley Road, PO Box Osseting Town in Newcastle, New York. The application for the amended special exception use permit approval was submitted to your board last month, October 19, following certain modifications. Continue? Okay. The application for amended special permit... Special exception use permit approval was submitted to your board last month, October 19, following certain modifications to the plan, which were made in response to comments received during the planning board's review of the steep slopes, wetlands, tree removal, and stormwater permit applications, which were conditionally granted by the planning board September 28, 2017. I know you're familiar with Sunshine. You will recall that it operates a 54-bed licensed nursing facility that specializes in the treatment of children with medically complex challenges. We're very proud of the home, that it provides state-of-the-art care and has a five-star rating from the federal government. I'm joined tonight by the principal, Ari Friedman, who's been before you many times before, and two of his children who live at the home reside there. He purchased it in 2009, as you recall, and he has put more than $5 million of improvements into the existing facility. Lyndy Mascello, the administrator, is also here with us this evening, and you'll hear shortly from Michael Youngins, our engineer, and planning firm of Kinley Horn. Just to give you a very brief background on the history, because you know it was a lengthy history. The certificate of need for this project was issued by New York State originally in August of 2014, and it has been extended and is currently active. In September... On September 28, 2016, your board, as lead agency under Seeker, approved the negative declaration of environmental significance, ending the environmental review process for the project at that time. That same evening, the ZBA granted an amended special exception use permit for the project and two area variances. Last month, the planning board granted the steep slopes, wetlands, tree removal, and stormwater pollution permits. However, in granting those four permits, the planning board recommended the reconfiguration and relocation of the proposed building expansion away from the northwest property line adjacent to the town of Osseting Cedar Lane Park and a private residential neighbor's parcel in order to reduce the proposed disturbance to steep slopes, including one extremely steep slope, and to provide additional area for tree planting. In addition to that, the planning board also recommended shifting the proposed parking area and detention basin further away from the northeast property line, which consequently reduced the steep slope disturbance, preserved an additional 37 trees, as well as reduced the proposed retaining wall from 22 to 10 feet high. In sum, the project continues to suit the needs of the applicant, as has been requested with the change by the planning board, and is still consistent with the CON granted by New York State. Now that the two variances have been granted by your board, the proposal is fully conforming. The reconfiguration of the building and the project either leaves the potential environmental impacts exactly the same as they were before you, or decreases the impacts. And we'll go through the chart with you. So with that said, that's the background. I also want to mention, for the record, there was an error in our EAF that was pointed out by the Village of Osseting attorney. We cited the wrong fire district. That's been corrected and a change page was sent to you, so that has been changed. And all that is before you tonight is the amendment, and that amendment, again, decreases the impacts, does not increase the number of beds, does not increase the square footage, does not increase the cover... Nothing is changed. In fact, it's been decreased. And this is to be... We are here before you because we'd like to be consistent with the planning board approval so that we can have one approval. So that's the story. We're gonna put up Michael Youngins, who's our engineer from Kinley Horn, to just show you on the board exactly what it looks like. Thank you.
Before we start on that, can I ask one question?
Sure.
Because you mentioned the EAF.
Yes.
Page 4 of 13, there's a... It says, "Does the proposed action include new non-residential construction, including expansions?" If yes, there's a whole bunch of things that it's asking for. And one of them is, "Does the proposed action include construction or other activities that will result in the impoundment of any liquids, such as the creation of water supply, reservoir, pond, lake, waste lagoon, or other storage?" You answered no. I think that should be yes because of the tank that you're putting in for the capturing of rainwater for irrigation. Should that not be a yes instead of a no on that?
That, for me, is a perfect transition. The author is here. I'm gonna let him answer before his presentation. How's that?
I just want to get that straight before we get on because that's the only question I had on the floor.
That's fine.
Yeah, I guess we consider that more of an extension of the stormwater system, but I guess it could also be considered for that reason, too, and we can make that change if that interpretation is what's accepted.
Yeah, to me, impoundment is... A tank is impounding water. Not that it affects your ultimate end of the project, but I think it should be done correctly.
Yeah, we have no problem with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just wanted to go over and give you just a little more detail of the changes we did and a couple graphics, just to make it a little clearer. I just have a couple slides to go through. The first thing, I just wanted to refresh the board's memory that when we were before the board last, right before we went to the negative deck, we had done an adjustment to the building also into the site plan. And that's when we had slid the building over. The red line is where the building was at original application. And then, based on comments we received, the building was slid about 80 feet to the left, which resulted in this wing here, which is actually a classroom wing, to get pushed out to the corner here, and we ended up with a fill of a steep slope on that end. Yeah, and the reason, and as you probably well remember, was to remove the building from that wetland buffer. As you can see here, we're just beyond it. And it gave us the opportunity to add quite a bit of additional pervious and landscaped surfaces next to that pond. And we went all through that, and all those numbers were part of the neg deck. Moving forward, after it left this board, we went to the planning board review, and they had a couple iterations of different changes we did to the plan. The first change was in December 2016. The planning board had actually conducted a site visit prior to the meeting and identified a number of areas on site where they wanted additional landscaping. That additional landscaping was based on opportunity sites that we identified in the field, where we had holes in the canopy and additional areas where tree placement could be maximized, specifically up against the adjacent property at the north end of the site here and adjacent to the parking area. Next, on the slope that was adjacent to the park here, where the new building... Where the building was pushed up against the property here, we added additional landscaping. And then down along the road, it was identified, because of all the clearing that was done by the utility, that some additional trees along the street frontage would be helpful to fill that area in. So we added those trees, and it actually reduced the amount of trees that we're gonna have to offset in the tree bank and up the count quite a bit. Next, based on concerns by the board about the steep slopes primarily, we worked with the board to come up with a change in the building. Now, that change in the building keeps the overall building size approximately the same, but switches around some of the uses.
I'm sorry, when you say approximately the same, is it the same or is it different?
Yeah, within two square feet. Within two square feet. So pretty close to the same.
Square feet larger?
Less.
Less, okay.
Less, within the requirements of the neg deck. We still have that square footage met here.
Okay.
What happened was, the consideration was that portion that stuck out here was creating a rather large fill against the steep slopes that moved down to the park. So what consideration was made is this area... This classroom wing is actually moved around the corner to here. The red shows the previous proposal and the black shows the current proposal. That also ended up with a reconfiguration of the space against the existing building here, and it was consolidated behind that existing building. As you can see, the majority of the building didn't change. It was... The core of the building stayed the same. It was more of the perimeter spaces and the classroom. This allowed us to first pull this retaining wall in right against the building, reducing that retaining wall from 22 feet down to 10 feet. We were able to remove quite a bit of steep slopes, which I'll give you some very specific numbers in a moment. We were able to pull the emergency access road right up against the building. And in addition, we were able to slide the parking closer, moving the detention basin and allowing additional plantings along the north side of the property, further buffering the adjacent property. So it was a considerable reduction in impact, which we'll give you a full summation in a minute, by making these changes to the building to address the concerns of the planning board.
Could you just refresh our memories? Where are the closest neighbors?
The closest neighbors is... This is the property line here, so you have, for the most part, undeveloped land on the northwest side. And then you have a neighbor up at about this point here, Mr. Manchurian on the other side. He owns the other side, too. That's correct.
Okay.
Now, this is a more in-depth look at the steep slopes. By doing the changes, not only did we remove the steep slope impact here, where we had that piece of the building sticking out, we also looked at other opportunity sites within the disturbed area. And we were able to remove some additional areas where steep slopes were being impacted here by adjusting the grading. Also, areas adjacent to the building here that had proposed to have been reconfigured, we were able to adjust the grades to allow those areas to stay in place. As a result, we ended up reducing the steep slope impact for the project by over a half an acre. We went from 3.6 acres of steep slopes disturbance to under 3.1 acres. So it's a considerable reduction. Also, looking at the tree removal. By reworking these areas, the trees that were proposed to be removed here now will all remain. It's about 34 trees. And then some additional trees by the reworking of the grades in these areas will allow us to keep those trees. As a total, we were able to save 54 trees by reworking the plan. Moving forward, too, we were able to do additional buffer plantings. Because this parking lot pulled to the left about another 60 feet, the detention basin that was out here got consolidated down to this area here, which allowed us to do considerably more planting up on the north end of the site. Again, we also added additional trees on the northwest side against the buffer and worked, again, with the board and Steve Coleman, to find any other additional areas that made And the last revision that came out is, after we had gone through the revision, there was still a concern regarding the proposed parking area and the area of asphalt. This was that proposed parking area after its relocation. While we looked at the area, we realized that if we changed it into a perimeter configuration of parking, we were able to maintain the same amount of parking, but add a green space in the middle of the parking lot with a walkway that would connect from one end to the other, would be kind of a pocket park up on the top side of the site. We actually have some benches proposed in the middle, so it can be an amenity to the people who work and the people who visit. And it considerably cuts down on the amount of parking in this area adjacent to the building. It gives it a really nice aesthetic. So additional changes, adding more trees and reducing the amount of parking area. But to maintain the number of parking, we did not lose a single space. It was just more efficiently laid out. Now, looking at the current site plan, which was submitted, has all these changes incorporated into it. We have that parking here, the building shift with the movement of the classroom wing, and then the reconfiguration of the building adjacent. All these changes resulted in a reduction in a considerable amount of impacts, some of which I've already mentioned. First, the steep slopes were reduced by a little over a half an acre. The tree removal, 54 trees were saved based on the regrading of those areas. We reduced our tree from the June 2016 plan, which is what the neg deck was based on, to the current plan, we went from 177 to 123. And then we increased the buffer trees, street trees and internal trees. We were able to reduce our tree bank contribution from 257 trees, by 257 trees, from 346 in June 2016 to the current plan, which only requires 89 to the tree bank. So that was a significant drop in trees by adding trees and then reducing the number that were cut. And then the area of disturbance, based on the reconfiguration, has actually gone down by just under a half an acre, from 8.86 down to 8.39. So the plan does definitely represent a reduction in impacts over the plan that the neg deck was based on. That's it?
We're going to hear from the...
Yeah, you can open the public hearing and hear from members of the public tonight regarding the proposed changes in the plan. I'm not sure if the director of planning has anything to add at this point in time.
No.
Not at this point.
Okay. Comments, questions by the board at this point before we hear from the public?
I've got my question answered.
Okay. Do we need a motion to open the public hearing?
You can make a motion. I move that we open the public hearing on this application. Hold on a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who from the audience would like to address the board?
Hi.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Jamie Black. I live at 35 Quaker Bridge Road in Austin, New York. And I'm a former resident of Chappaqua. Many happy years spent here. Candidly, when I lived here, I had no idea that this West End actually existed. And I really only became aware of it and sensitized to it when it became my home. I obviously know what it takes to traverse the roads from here to there, because I've done it on a number of occasions. The thing to share with you is this, is since there have been revisions to the site plan and also a major correction in terms of fire protection, I'd like to, as somebody who has a severely disabled stepson and somebody who's a former wife of a volunteer fire department member, I'd like to speak to this area, the children in residence here, and speak specifically to fire protection. These children are medically fragile. Many of them aren't supplemental oxygen. If you ask a firefighter, what's their greatest fear, supplemental oxygen is that. Because in many instances, it creates a horrible choice. Because if you have a building that's being fed by supplemental oxygen, you have to make a decision as to whether or not that gets turned off, or you bring your firefighters in under that condition. Additionally, what makes sort of the world that we live in precarious is Newcastle commissioned a study in 2014 that you're probably aware of, speaking to fire protection for all of Newcastle, to look at what changes needed to be made. In the executive summary, the primary concern is twofold. One is lack of manpower and the other concern is lack of water. They speak specifically to considering with the construction of any new fire department, actually putting in rooms to allow for full-time or part-time firemen, because volunteers are dropping. So in this specific instance with this facility, the companies that cover this facility, it's not Austin. If it was Austin, you'd have 502 volunteers who are less than five miles away to come to help support the facility. The problem is, is for much of Austin, we have no tankers. And we have no tankers because we have a public water supply. So our crews show up, hook up and fight. The serious problem with this area is there's no show up, hook up and fight. It's covered by the Millwood Fire Department. You have one set of trucks and one tanker, the tanker that's less than six minutes away. Only the chief can drive that tanker. And what he says is, it's not when the tanker arrives, it's if the tanker arrives. And why is that? Because tanker trucks are inherently, sadly, unstable because they're traveling with water. We had a tanker truck flip on our S-turn. They were practicing, it wasn't even an emergency. So to share with you, in terms of the situation, you have Millwood that has an engine and a tanker that should be covering this event. They have 3,000 gallons onboard. 3,000 gallons, when they pump it, 770, which is what's required to suppress a fire, they're basically out of water in under 10 minutes. And then they have to wait. Now, your report that you commissioned in Newcastle in 2014, it said, when you have a fire in a nursing home or in a hospital, at a minimum, you need to show up with four engines, you need to show up with two pumpers, you need to show up with manpower of 26 people. Now, this is where you have a problem. In order to get your extra engines and your extra pumpers, they have to come from Millwood's new fire department that they put further away from Sunshine Home. Or guess where else they come from? They come from Yorktown. When you look at the number of miles that have to be traveled, if you look at perfect road conditions, fire trucks are not supposed to travel beyond 35 miles per hour on our types of road. It takes a minimum of perfect road conditions, no rush hour, no snow, no rain, 16 minutes to get there. So you have a facility that's on fire. The entire upper structure of this building, they haven't identified what it's for. The lower structure has a minimum number of walls. We're in the woods, identified the neighboring property. Neighboring property is all woods. I know what it's like to live in the woods. We have fires in the woods. How do they happen? Because everybody's tried to share, we have a lack of water problem. My well went dry. I had to hook up on public water. So here we're in a situation, I call it the perfect fire, because, one, you have children on supplemental oxygen. Two, you have a volunteer fire department. Three, they have to travel from a far distance. Now, travel far first. Very few members of a fire company are actually certified and qualified to drive the equipment. People don't know that. Additionally, there's a very few members that are certified for quote unquote interior fires. What makes this especially hard in speaking with the fire teams and speaking with EMS, they have to transport each child that's on live oxygen by changing them over to supplemental oxygen. So you have a building that's on fire, you have a lack of water. So you have part of the company trying to figure out where the water's going to come from to extinguish the fire. They have to be certified to go into the interior. They have to go into the interior, they have to find the children, they have to attach the children to a portable supply. And sadly and tragically, most of these children cannot move under their own volition. So you have to physically move them. So you have a building that's on fire, you have smoke, you have to find the kids, and then somebody has to make the decision about the live oxygen. Now, when I look at this building and I look at the construction, fires usually start in the roof area. That's common. But you have all these kids on live oxygen down below, so conceptually it could start from down below. So the key issue is this. You have open floor space down below. You have no basically stabilizing structural walls. You have this whole expanse upstairs that they've not even suggested what they're planning on doing with it. It's over 100,000 square feet. We're in the woods. Fire starts, fire starts on the roof. Okay, so fire starts on the roof. Worst nightmare for firemen, in addition to live oxygen, in addition to children, is collapsing ceilings. So please look at this from the perspective of the perfect fire. And the question is not if it will happen, it's when it will happen. Because in my house during the summer months, I'm smelling smoke. And I'm smelling smoke because the land across the river is, in many instances, smoldering somewhere. So what I am absolutely imploring you to do is understand that facilities like this are supposed to be on a state road. And why are they supposed to be on it? It's for access. I have recommended an alternative location for this facility for these children. And the alternative location is, and I asked Astorino to consider it, is lease space. We have 80 acres next to the children's hospital. 80 acres that could be leased from Westchester County. And then you're in a situation where you're on a state road, you have the access to the children's trauma center, you have the access to the trauma center, and you also have access to all county and you have the emergency services right there. So what I'm saying is this, is as a stepmom to a severely disabled child, knowing that this facility was initially gifted along with the land for children with asthma who had no problems with mobility, who had no trouble with cognitive challenges, I am saying this is a whole change of views in terms of the intention that the landowner gave out of his heart in an effort to try to create a better situation to challenge children. Now we're in a situation where we're putting them in harm's way. So truly understand how important it is to meet the needs of severely disabled children. I know that from my heart, I know that from my reality. So I'm asking everyone here to deny this application and implore them, because they do not have access to public water, they do not have access to paid firemen, and these roads are very hard to divert. And, most importantly, Newcastle, your plows leave from King Street. You plow all the way to Sunshine Home. So in some instances, it takes not only hours, in other instances, if the weather's real bad, it takes you a day. So you're asking the volunteers to try to get there, to save and rescue the children, if they're qualified to actually do that or go into the building, in potentially extremely difficult and dangerous conditions. So I implore you to really revisit how you think about this facility, who it's supposed to serve. And as adults, I truly believe it is our responsibility to take ownership of the safety and the well-being of any disabled child. And to have them in this location is tantamount to putting them in a situation where they would be burned to death. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, before you have anything to say, I'll give you an opportunity, but someone else would like to speak. And so I just want to clarify for this evening. We're here, we've just witnessed or heard from the applicant as it relates to the changes that they've made, right? So it's those changes that we're interested in hearing from you about. So this relates to, I'm not picking on you, I'm just saying, this relates to the shifting of the building, the mitigation that they've embarked upon, the way they've addressed the steep slopes, you know, those elements of the site at this time. So, you know, I appreciate very much the comments of this woman, but I just want to establish that for further comments.
Mr. Chairman, just to add, for the members of the public who are not aware, there were multiple public hearings with respect to the approval of the underlying expansion of the facility over the course of over, I think it was 18 months or 16 months that the board held. There is now a pending litigation regarding many, regarding the approvals that this board issued and all of the environmental issues that were involved in that approval, including one of which is fire protection, which is the subject of a currently pending litigation. So as the chairman stated, that this hearing is only with respect to the changes that are being considered as part of this change in site plan. And it would be inappropriate for the board, given the pending litigation, to, you know, re-review the determinations that were previously made in the prior resolutions.
Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Anne Martin. I work, I live in a, what they consider in a budding property, 155 Hawks Avenue, so the back of our property is what you face when you come out of Sunshine. So I guess, I'm not sure that it really sort of falls into what you're saying, but I guess I just wanted some clarification on the monitoring of the wells, because after the January 19th meeting, in the paperwork and actually at that meeting, they had said, well, we'll monitor since there was concern about the well water. And I, they said that they would do it within 1,500, one place at 1,500 feet of Sunshine, one place at 2,000 feet. So I Google mapped it. Our well happens to be within 1,100 feet from the well to the main building. I assume that's the distance we were looking at. And so, right after that meeting, I emailed Newcastle and said, you know, we'd like to be on the list of wells to monitor. They said that you guys aren't handling it. They referred me to Linda Masiello at Sunshine. So I emailed her. She said, we're not really addressing that right now. Our consultants will, you know, review it and then I'll just take your name for future reference. I haven't heard back from anybody and really, my understanding is, you know, since it sounds like work may be starting soon, that the wells need to be monitored before the work starts and then, and then after the work starts for there to be any, you know, comparison to be made. And so, you know, we've lived in our house for 16 years, we've never had any problem with the water capacity. I do work for my, I do work for my work in backcountry Greenwich, and I've done some properties where one property owner did, started doing a lot of irrigation of like 20 acres, and then all the other surrounding areas went dry. And as the one caretaker said, it was like a race to the bottom. So that sort of put me on notice that, you know, we really could actually run dry depending on things. So I guess I just wanted clarification on the monitoring of the wells. And then actually, that led me to my next question, which is, what would be the recourse if for some reason the monitoring really should be done before the work starts and then addressed along the way? And so that's why if work's starting soon, that sort of needs to be addressed soon. And then my next question would be, if we were to go dry and it showed that we had adequate water before and then not adequate water after, I'm not actually quite sure what happens at that point. So I know it's not really what you were saying I was supposed to talk about.
Thank you. Again, you know, we didn't open up the conversation this evening and address wells or water or other matters related to that.
Questions regarding the conditions of approval can be directed in writing to the planning department and should be, you know, if there are issues with respect to the applicant, can be directed to the applicant or copied with the applicant. The board isn't in an appropriate situation to advise people what to do in the event, you know, certainly that's something that can be raised if a condition is not satisfied and the public believes a condition needs to be satisfied, that issue should be raised with the town. I think it's premature at this point for the board to address any questions with respect to failure to satisfy conditions, since we're still going through the approval, this last step of the approval process now. But I would recommend that any questions regarding the approvals be directed to the planning department in writing and, you know, those will be directed to the applicant and considered at that time. But this board wouldn't be the appropriate body to respond to those questions.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard? Again, if you could try to frame your comments as they relate to what you've heard this evening.
Will do. My name is Adam Stalero. I'm with the law firm of Cyia Paget and Rosell, and we represent Cynthia and Jeffrey Manicharian. Nice to be back here before the board. I had a couple of procedural points just to start, and one was that, and we did send a letter to the zoning board this week. The zoning board had the submission from Sunshine for more than five weeks before it went up on the town's website for the public to review. And I just, you know, would like to request that as materials come in, they get posted as quickly as they can. It allows for better, you know, more efficient public hearing process. It allows more members of the public to participate.
You're right.
Okay.
You're right.
Thanks. And it's something that the zoning board was very good about the first time around. And the second point was really a question about what the secret process is going to be for this amended review or the amended permit application. I know an environmental assessment form came in with the application. I also know the planning board is supposed to make comments on, you know, to the zoning board. So I just had a question about how the process was going to, was going to unfold.
I'm going to let Eric answer.
Counsel, right now with respect to the secret process, counsel and the planning department are consulting on that, and we will advise the board as appropriate. With respect to the planning board, there will be, there needs to be a referral, I believe, tonight if...
It's a town code requirement. It's not a secret requirement for you to refer the application to the planning board and the architectural review board.
Right. So that, our recommendation, I believe, is going to be that the board should adopt a motion to refer this application back to the planning board and the ARB for reporting recommendation with respect to that issue.
Okay. And then, something just about the secret process in general, which is, yes, the board is reviewing the project changes, but the board also has a continuing responsibility as a lead agency to look at new information that comes in, change in circumstances. There's a list of secret requirements where the board actually has continuing responsibility to hear things. So if people are coming up... So, if people are coming up with new information and changing circumstances related to this project, they don't even really need a public hearing to do that. The board has a continuing responsibility to hear and respond to those, that new information as a lead agency.
Sorry, Eric, do you want to speak to that point?
That's just a statement. It's a legal statement by counsel. I'm not going to respond tonight.
Okay.
And we brought with us tonight copies of a letter that's going out to the planning board and the building inspector tomorrow. The zoning board is copied. I can, I have slides to go along with that.
Are you going to be addressing that on the screen or?
So, I have, there are hard copies for each of the board members, but I also have it on the screen.
Okay, sure. Do you want to pass them down? One more. Okay. Now, I guess because I've said it to everybody else, this addresses the changes that the applicant has spoken about this evening?
This is actually current site work that started over Thanksgiving weekend that we want the zoning board to ask the applicant about tonight because it's not part of the site plan that came before you, and it's not part of the permit applications that came before the planning board. So, this is an example of new information that isn't, that we want the board to inquire about and that we want to know about.
Well.
I'm not sure where the proper.
Right. I mean, if there are allegations that there are violations occur, some violation of town code that is occurring, that would be properly directed to the building department for review.
You don't, that's not what we do.
Well, as I said before, it is what you do as the lead agency. If there's an aspect of the project that's moving forward and has not been studied under secret.
Wait, wait, we don't even know if this is an aspect of the project. This could be just general property maintenance, or it could be beginning of construction, which we have no idea which or what it is. And I think you should make a, make a report or a, some kind of a notification to the town, to those who will be monitoring this, such as the building department, and they will advise us if that's the case. I don't think we should make that determination as to what that really represents.
Well, we definitely won't know if we don't talk about it.
Well, you don't talk about it to us first. You talk about it to the authorities that are in control, then they will advise us.
A building inspector will report back to us.
I think we're just wasting our time here.
Something to be reported.
You can contact me and we will set up with somebody to go out and take a look at it to see what activities are happening and if they are in violation of anything.
Okay. So, two, two points. One, I have Cynthia Manicharian with me. She's the property owner who saw the work that was going on. And the second is that this, you know, we would ask that the board keep the public hearing open because this is a change in the project that has not been reviewed, that we want a chance to come back and talk to the board about it. And if it, and if there's an intervening visit by the site inspector, then we would just ask for the opportunity to come back and discuss that if it's, if it's properly before the board.
I hear. Okay.
Hi, Cynthia Manicharian from 100 Glendale Road. I think what Adam is trying to refer to is there are discussions tonight about how with the change of location of the building itself, trees are being saved. So, that is a topic that's interesting to you tonight. The tree bank is not going to be overburdened. It's actually going to be put back on site. So, we would like to let you know that actually there's plenty on the site plan that actually was never brought to your attention. So, tree cutting is happening now on site, and that should be part of your review. And in fact.
Okay, I understand.
Is not.
I understand. The point, the point is that that jurisdiction lies with the building department, okay? And so, if you see that, please report it to them. They will investigate it. You've made it known here this evening. We heard you. We're ready to move on to the next subject, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there someone else? Yes.
I'd like to reiterate a little bit about what Adam said. My name is Will Wedge. I was born in the West End, and I live in Chapukah now for the past 14 years, and I've been very active in development issues in the town. And I've taken now a great interest in this project, but I am rather new to it. I'm not new to procedure, however. And Chairman Cooper, you apologized that you received documentation for this resubmital from the applicant five weeks ago, but neglected through whatever staff error not to get that information to the website until 36 hours ago. On that basis alone, this public hearing should be continued to another meeting?
I don't, I don't know that we're closing the public hearing, so just to address that.
I don't, whether or not you know is not my point. My point is that it should not be.
I heard you.
Okay, we understand that because we've had no time to review what are in the documents adequately. We needed these two weeks, possibly four. And, and I think it's a reasonable question and a reasonable request from a very large number of interested people that they have adequate time to see what's in the plans while we can run processes like this through the other relevant town departments. If you're going to say, "That's not us," pointing, pointing it somewhere else.
Don't misunderstand.
No, I'm not misunderstanding. I'm very clearly understanding you, Chairman Cooper.
Okay.
So, we need the time to analyze the documents that have been submitted publicly 36 hours ago.
Heard you. You've said that now more than once.
I know. I'm reiterating it for the record.
I don't need you to repeat yourself.
Okay.
Okay, I did hear you.
Okay.
Okay. Do you have something else that you would like to add?
Yes, my other point is, is that while that process, while we have the time to review, we want to make sure that the results of these other investigations are communicated in the proper channels to this committee. And we don't want to let, we know the delays that occur in the building department. They are incredibly overburdened at this point with multiple projects going on in town, Chapukah Crossing.
We all, we all know about that. Yes, sir.
Yes, we do. But maybe people listening on TV don't know that. So, you can't expect rapid response from the building department on a situation like this. So, you have to give this process enough breathing room to review these resumables.
When somebody calls in a violation or a complaint, especially on a larger project, the building department's out there, I'd say within 24 to 48 hours.
Richie, that's not my experience.
What was your experience? I'm sorry.
Over on Conifer, when we had the odor control problems, it took me about two weeks to get anybody's butt out of a chair out of the building department. Excuse me, I do not agree with your assertion.
No, I don't think it did take that long, sir.
It did. I have it documented, Richie. By the way, I never got a response back from you on it. I had a memo into you, Richie, about that situation we've never responded to.
Sir, sir. Okay, back to this matter, okay?
Back to the matter is, we want the, we want the response to have its time to run through the other departments for things like this, and we want this meeting, we want the public hearing continued with sufficient time in the interests of the people who may be impacted by this development, not in the interest of the developer. The process, the momentum in the process, once public hearing is open, is in favor of the developer and not the people who are concerned about the development.
I don't necessarily agree with that.
I know you don't agree with it.
Well, how would you know that?
Because I've seen the way the board has voted, sir. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Liz Feldman, Underhill Road, Austining. I would just like to ask how the changes, and you can put the other map up, changed the visual impact from our dog park, the dog park, the abutting area. What, how, what are the visual changes? I know we have a big visual impact. Is there any screening going to be put in place? People go up there to relax and walk their dogs, and we would really like to keep the tranquility, and I'd like to understand how these changes impact that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Yes, please.
I think as far.
Mic from.
Pardon me.
I think as far as the dog park, it's actually a considerable improvement because, as I mentioned before, this appendage here used to be located in this area, which pushed the fire access road all the way out. By swinging that appendage around the building and pulling that fire road back allowed us to maintain all the existing trees that are there, the mature trees, and also to infill where we located areas where additional trees could be planted. Dog park is about over here. This is actually going to be considerably more buffered than in the previous plan.
Does that address your comment?
I'm not confident that's where the dog park is.
I'm, I'm sorry. Could you please step up to the microphone?
Michael, do you have an area map?
They say they have a visual, but I'm not really confident that's exactly where the dog park is.
Meaning, I'm sorry, meaning that you're not sure where it is on this plan or?
Right. I feel like it might be a little closer to where the abut's at. Where is the parking lot, too?
In this location over here, right here. This is the road that comes up right here.
Michael, you need a microphone.
Pardon me.
Sorry.
The road that comes up is here. There's a foundation here, which is where they put like the, the organic debris and the leaves in the fall. And then to the left of that, in this location over here is where the dog park is.
Okay.
So, so the one structure has been moved down to the bottom there where it would have been closer to the dog park?
Okay.
In one, no, you don't seem convinced.
No, no, no. I see, I see, I see.
Okay.
I just still feel it's a, still feel it's a big visual impact and among others.
No, no, stay here for, stay here for a second. No, no. You feel it's a visual impact in what respect?
People coming up the park road. I mean, it's, you could see where the existing building was.
Right.
And you can see, you know, it's what, 100 and how many square feet? 100,000?
Total?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's.
150,000.
Right, 150,000 square feet.
Yeah, but that's on two floors.
Okay, so it's taller.
What has, what has happened in terms of, in terms of the plantings that are there today, will any of them be removed?
They'd have to be.
Well, I want to, I want to make this clear.
Yes, actually, within, see this dashed line right here?
Yes.
That is the limit of disturbance. So, trees within that area where we're proposing the building will be removed.
Right.
So, we have additionally saved the trees here. And actually, if I back up, I can go back to the tree plan, it'll make it even clearer. Little black dots here are actually additional trees that are being saved as a result of this movement of the building. So, all these trees here are mature trees, which were previously proposed to be removed are now going to remain. And in addition, we're doing a lot of infill planting there. So, it's going to be a pretty considerable buffer.
And what elevation are those trees at in relation to the structure?
It runs across here. It almost levels off a little bit, but as you go this way, it drops off toward the dog park. In this area in particular, it drops off. So, you basically have the trees on a climbing slope, which actually even helps the buffering even better.
Okay. We'll stay here and discuss it some more if you want. No, no.
Okay, I mean, I.
No, no, no. Say what's on your mind, please.
If you really love to know what's on my mind, I, I really would love an actual environmental impact study.
Goodness, gentlemen, you're, I'm, yes.
Okay, I don't want to disrespect the board, you know, just speaking from a personal point of view and from the town. We really want to see a full impact of what taking out that many trees are messing, you know, all the things that are being done. We really still would strongly feel we would love an environmental impact study. I know you're not looking at that now. I know it's being changed, and, and we're still very concerned about the impacts to our residents, to their water, and to our park.
I know.
And that, that's what's on my mind.
Right. Okay. Okay, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Before you monopolize things, is there anyone else who would like to speak?
I have an elevation image for you.
On, on the same subject?
On the subject.
Okay.
Hi, Cynthia Manicharian, 100 Glendale Road. We'll put up their topo with the building moved to the location where you are reviewing it today. And I was actually interested in what happens when the planning board wanted to move the building away from the dog park because in this process where I knew pretty much no one in the West End before the review, I know many of these people now.
Sure.
Many of them are dog park users, and I enjoy going into the park as well. So, when I heard from the planning board, "Okay, we'll move it back and we'll move it off the steep slopes and we'll move it out of some wetlands that exist in that corner," I thought, "Oh, okay, maybe this is going to improve things." And I asked our engineer, "Can you do a 3D elevation so that we know what the new location is going to be like?" Um, hmm.
PowerPoint, is it, you know which?
Yeah. Sorry, I didn't have a lot of time myself to get this done. Uh, yes, there it is. Really? Oh, yai yai. We can bring it back? Okay, we, we can bring it back. We do have those elevations and they are interesting.
Very good. Thank you.
It's not going to open? Who's IT?
I might be able to.
Wow. We have a little of everything in the audience.
I became IC by having broken it that way first.
We're looking for the one that's called a view shade.
Uh, I understand.
Yeah.
Is it the presentation?
I guess so, yeah. That, uh, starting with A, 5A.
Okay, now you see that those files are not available. There's a dot ahead of the file name, which this program will not allow. However, we could use this one here.
There are three different images. So, that's the, the topo. So, my property is this back wall, this sidewall, and right in this area is the dog park over here, and the pushback retaining wall and building over here. Can you get the next image up? Because that's where you get to see the elevation. 5B?
Yeah, working on it.
Well, there's just a lot of them there. Oh, yes. Okay, so, any chance it can be bigger? I can't even read it. Okay. So, we, we are looking here at the topography in elevation and a human standing at the dog park. I think that's the right one.
Could you just help?
And the purple is the, is the 10-foot building height that you'll see. So, the walls and the building, and that's what you'll see. The dog park's on this side. My property wraps this way. Can you get to the next one? Yeah, that's the next one. So, dog park is on this side and wrapping around to the 22-acre lot, which is my lot. So, the building, it will be very difficult, this is the size of human, for them to do the kind of screening they're talking about and make the Cedar Lane dog park users and other park users not experience their building, even though it's great that it's been pushed away. It's going to be quite dramatic looking.
So, stay where you are. Could you come up and lend whatever interpretation you might have to?
I can't obviously validate this at all because, I mean, I'm not even sure.
Can you get to the next one? Yeah, that's the next one. So, dog park is on this side and wrapping around to the 22-acre lot, which is my lot. So, the building, it will be very difficult, this is the size of human, for them to do the kind of screening they're talking about and make the Cedar Lane dog park users and other park users not experience their building, even though it's great that it's been pushed away. It's going to be quite dramatic looking.
So, stay where you are. Could you come up and lend whatever interpretation you might have to-
I can't obviously validate this at all, because, I mean, I'm not even sure if the contours here are correct. It obviously doesn't show any of the existing tree line. The only thing I can tell you is it appears to be the property line, and the dog park would be over here, but I can't really validate the building size.
Okay, okay, fine. Thank you, thank you.
I'm going to have to submit your comments.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Please come forward.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi. My name is Helda Cordero. I believe the engineer, when he opened the meeting, I believe he was asked by one of your members how many neighbors, and he referred to us two neighbors. That's correct, except those two neighbors are far away, like Cindy, she's, she owns land next to the project, and there's another one, there's, there's another neighbor on Hawks Avenue, which is opposite, there's another neighbor in Quaker Hill. I am at 27 Spring Viro. I'm adjacent to that property. I'm literally a stone throw away from that property. I would ask-
If you could help us, in what position are you in relation to the property?
I would ask the engineer if you could please display the site plan, if you don't mind.
Yeah. So, while he's doing that, sir, so, so you're going to tell us that you're close to the property, right?
Yes, actually, I'm at the corner property of the silver mine, well, one of the silver mines.
Okay.
And Sunshine and my property. And I've stayed out of these, I call that a mess, for lack of a better word, over time. I've been watching, I've been, I work nights mostly.
Or is it messy?
Sometimes.
Sometimes.
So, I've been watching from afar. I never thought that this project was going to go this far, to tell you the truth, but I'm not here representing my neighbors, anybody, I'm here representing number one and my family at this point.
Right.
And I have concerns, concerns that were never addressed. I actually sent a letter to the town board a while back, but they never got it, was never responded.
So, maintain your thought there for a second. Has the fact that they have shifted the, the building, has that improved or?
No, it didn't make any difference to me.
In a detriment?
It didn't make any difference to me whatsoever.
It doesn't?
The fact that the building is being done there-
Right.
That's what makes the difference.
That's the issue.
That's the issue.
Mm-hmm.
A while back, and I don't have an exact date, a month ago, another resident of Spring Virode approached me and asked me about silver mines. Apparently, she heard from somebody else that I knew about the silver mines, I did. And from what I can understand, at least looking around this room, I'm probably the only person present right here at this room that knows anything about those silver mines. I've been inside of them. I've been inside, I believe, like 200 feet inside of them, underneath Sunshine property and my property, back 1986, give or take. I'm in the construction, I'm semi-retired right now, but I spent 30-plus years in the construction business. I was a foreman, I was a super, I was a safety, I call an engineer, actually, safety supervisor. And at one time, I was licensed, licensed in explosives and dynamite, blasting. So, I'm not an engineer, I'm not an attorney here trying to make friends or enemies, or I'm just concerned mostly with, with the blasting. Now, common sense tells you, if you're blasting over any kind of void, I call them hollows, in this case, silver mines, which Sunshine apparently has no idea where they're located, and I know that, I believe they only owned it, this management only owned Sunshine for a few years now, so I'm not surprised that they have no idea they exist, there could be a catastrophe for the construction people and the neighbors, including me. And length-wise, I'm not sure how far I am from the, from the actual construction site, but if you look in the site plan, in the right lower corner, you see that piece of land sticking out? There's two other neighbors in between, two other properties, and I'm at the, I'm at the right side, at that little elbow, at the first elbow in the bottom. I'm literally 20 feet away from the property, or rather, from the entrance of the mine. Their mine, part of it, runs underneath my site, and it goes underneath Sunshine's for at least 170 feet. That's as, as far as I went, but that time, it kept going. So, my concern is blasting, actually, building the whole thing in general, but mostly blasting. If somebody could tell me, and this is, of course, impossible, but that somehow they would build the building someplace else, and they have these giant crafts bringing in and putting in place, I may be saying, you know what? Why not? They're not disturbing anybody, there's no construction, once it's done, it's done. The problem is, from the moment they start construction, blasting, until they finish. These projects don't take, you know, a couple days, a couple months, sometimes even a couple years. They take much longer than that. I've worked on highways such as Northern Manchester, 684, 84, all set highways all over near Manchester, bottom counties. I've worked on a Tappan Zee bridge, New Tappan Zee Bridge, so I know a little bit more than the common person about construction.
Okay.
So, in order to make this short-
Yeah.
My, I'm opposed to the whole building process specifically and mostly because of the disrupting that's going to happen with the blasting. I have a well, my well is 40 feet deep, it's not that deep. My house was built 120 years ago, give or take. The well is probably, I'm guessing, at least 100 years old. Once it starts blasting, they're going to start releasing radium, which they already found when they dug some of the wells. They're going to disturb the, what do you call it, the mercury on the old mines. If you do some research, years ago, mercury was used to remove the silver from the silver mines, and whatever chemicals were left there are still there. You know, I know the water was tested, and I don't know the results, but I'm assuming it came back drinkable, but once you start disturbing it, I'm the guy at the bottom of the hill, because I'm right at the bottom of the hill, that's going to get all that stuff. Now, my well goes dry, gets contaminated, and somebody asked that question before, the well goes dry, who's responsible? Okay, I, I, probably not, he's probably not the right person to answer that, but that's something that I have to, to think about it. I mean, my house, I've been there for 20-plus years. I moved there because I love the neighborhood, I used to live in Austin, and my son was born, and at the same time, I bought the house to give my family privacy and peace of mind. And now, I'm being forced out, because I'm actually thinking of selling the house, I'm actually thinking of putting a house on the market before this whole thing, before the major construction starts, and then I can give it away.
Okay.
Okay?
I think we understand your point, your comments are now part of the official record, okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else? No? Okay. What is, yes, yes, sure. I'll be brief.
There are a few comments, I want to make sure as we go through each of the categories to make it very clear, that when it comes to fire protection, that when it comes to the monitoring of the wells, when it comes to the silver mines, and when it comes to the visual, we'll keep the visual impact separate for a moment. There have been no changes here that have been made that are of any impacts, which have been increased with respect to any of those, so there has been no change or there's been a decrease in each of those items with respect to the application that is before you, which is what is under review. With regard to the visual impact, I want to give you a little background. At the planning board, that visual impact, that change of that building when it was shifted again under the context of the jurisdiction of steep slopes, one of the particular reasons it was done was because of one of the, the adjacent neighbor who's here this evening, who made a presentation to the board and said, I'm not satisfied, it's too close to my property line. That change was specifically made and was acquiesced to by us to improve things for that specific neighbor for that particular purpose. I also want to make it clear to this board, we were satisfied with the project as it was approved by your board. These changes were made and they were acquiesced into by us at that time, by that board, because we thought these were improvements that helped and were in response to questions that came at public hearings. So, with respect to that, again, on the visual impact side, clearly, when you move a building from one place to another place, it's a different view, but at the same token, what has also been proven is there is more screening, more trees, it's been pulled farther away from the neighboring properties. It's impossible to make the, to make the argument that, that the visual impact has somehow been, you know, has been harmed or made worse by this particular project. So, with that in mind and considering so that I don't have to get up again how your board works, I understand that there's been a, there was some snafu where our materials did not get online till a later date. I believe, even though my client would probably say, don't admit it, you're going to put this over to your next hearing, because that's the way this board operates, we've been here before. In that instance, I would ask that, because it is clear to me, at least, with respect to this specific application, that there haven't been any changes, and we'll talk about the SEACR thing in a moment, the SEACR issue, we'd like to ask if it was possible to get a resolution drafted, that in, in fact, if in case, at your next hearing, there were no impacts that were brought up that were significant or changed, et cetera, that you'd be in a position to approve this, if that was so, so I'm just at least making that suggestion. On the issue of SEACR, we think it's very simple, the question was raised, I know that your own council and planning board will give you, and planning department will give it to you. With regard to this change, which again is only the amendment, it is an unlisted action, we, there is virtually no impact, there's no change to square footage, we have all those materials that are in front of you, and it would be appropriate for another negative declaration, which would assess, as the EAF did, the specific impacts that are in front of you, not from the start, we have a negative declaration, you, you put it forward, it's actually being litigated now, that stands by itself, we would suggest that a, another unlisted action, new negative declaration, which would be part of the things that we would be requested, that would be drafted for the next hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you bring up the changes to this-
Say your name.
Jamie Black, 35 Quaker Bridge Road, Austin, New York. When you look at this concern and the commitment about screening, the concern and the commitment about trees, having more trees remaining, having additional trees added, every single tree that you add within 30 feet of this fire safety road creates a hazard for the emergency response team. So, you're in a situation where in an effort to try to save the trees and have the tree bank, the fire safety road needs to have a buffer, because the challenge that we have in our neighborhood is that our woods catch on fire. So, when you think that the fire starts in the woods, the last thing that you want are trees next to the emergency access road.
Okay.
So, the other thing, too, is this, is since there was a change in terms of who's to provide fire protection for this site, has this board met with the chiefs of the battalion that's responsible for fire protection? And I'm concerned about, one, that not having happened, two, them not having had an opportunity to look at the site, and three, not having had their feedback put into the initial thinking about the approval for this project.
Okay, I, I understand the comment. Do you have a response to that about Millwood?
It's beyond Millwood. You have, you have four fire companies responsible for this property. You have Millwood, you have Yorktown, and you have two other fire companies that are even further north, responsible for this property. And you're aware of that, right?
This property resides, obviously, in the Millwood Fire District and, and currently serviced by them, and we did meet with them and went to, through the project with the chiefs, and they did submit a letter, and those requested revisions were incorporated into the plan under the review.
Okay, thank you. Okay, please come forward.
You're mov-
Hi, Jonathan Goldstein, 221 Cedar Lane. The gentleman expressed that they are moving the footprint of the building, and that by moving the footprint, that this will have no further impact, but you're blasting. So, it doesn't seem that the blasting was particularly well-considered in the first place, since they were unaware of the silver mines, and moving the footprint, what are you going to do, you're guessing?
Okay, thank you for your comment.
Mr. Chairman, just on the, on the fire district, just to clarify, I believe the reason that that came up, on the initial EAF that was submitted, there was an error that listed the Austin Fire District for fire protection, and the revised one was submitted, which states that the Millwood Fire Department, so it wasn't a, there wasn't a change, it was, it was in the EAF, there was a-
Right.
And just to make it clear, it was correct in the, in the EAF in the first application, it was just an error in the, that what was submitted is part of this amendment, and before we ever came before you, we have now submitted a substitution page, because it was just an error.
Understood. Where do we go from here, Eric?
So, I think the next step would be for the board to move to refer the application to the planning board in the ARB.
Right.
You know, I'm not, since this is the first public hearing on this revised, first opening of the public hearing, I would recommend that you keep the public hearing open until next week. I'm not sure that we're in the proper situation in order to draft resolutions yet as far as this project. I'm sure we're going to get more comments from the public, and, you know, I think the board needs some time to, to consider all those comments properly.
Okay.
Karen Wells, 28 Applebee Farm Road, representing the Greater T-Town Defense Alliance, which involves Newcastle residents in addition to residents of the other communities. I am happy to hear that this is going to be put forth to the next meeting, because we got many comments from members in our community citing that they would not even feel it appropriate to come and comment or be here, because they had no time to look at the information.
Okay, that's why we're going to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll make a motion that this matter be referred to the planning board and the ARB for their, a report and recommendation.
Second.
Is there anything more that I need to cover as it relates to this?
For that, and then a motion to adjourn the public hearing to the next meeting.
And I would move that we adjourn the public hearing until, and carry it forward to the next meeting?
Yeah, the December 20th meeting.
Yeah, okay. Second?
I'll second.
Hold us a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approved. Thank you. I'll make a motion that the meeting minutes for the October 25th meeting be approved.
I'll second that.
Hold us a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're off.